All right, welcome everybody to the October 7th meeting of the Webster Select Board at 6:30 PM. And we will open as per usual with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dan Hemingway, Chair of the Select Board.
Marla Eric.
Norm D. Blake.
And going over the meeting rules and procedures, we try to do things fairly normal and easy here to include everybody. Since we do have a fair crowd, we're still gonna try to do this, but we basically use classroom rules. So please don't talk over each other, please talk to us, not each other. And raise your hand if it's a topic that you want to talk about it and we'll try to get to you. Also, if you need help hearing and something is not loud enough, we do have an audio system. You can bring out the mics and use it if you need it, so please just let us know if that's the case. Fortunately, most of us have fairly big mouths. So, that moves me on to announcements. The October is Energy Awareness Month. So as the sun starts to sit lower and come in your windows more and the nights get cooler, now is the time to make sure that your house is prepped for winter and clean your heating systems for safety and efficiency, seal your doors and windows, and in shoulder seasons like this, that can help you delay putting on your heat for a while and save you some money. Because of Energy Awareness Month, we'll also plug our library. Are you curious as to where that cold draft is coming from when you thought you'd figured it out? Or is it colder on the wall than you think it should be? The library now has a thermal leak detector and instruction card that can assist you in using it. So please go ahead over there and check it out if you want to do those things. Also, they still have a kilowatt meter, so if you're wondering if your fridge or something else is using too much energy, just plug it into that and it'll tell you after a short while how much it's using, and that can help you out as well. October is also Fire Prevention Month, and the second week of October here is Fire Prevention Week. So please check your smoke detectors for expirations, make sure that they test correctly and have fresh batteries. Make sure you haven't made that extension cord a permanent part of your electrical system. And any newly set up cords for temporary holiday items, please make sure they don't get pinched indoors or similar. A last announcement from me, there will be a joint meeting of this board with Hopkinton Board next week regarding the transfer station. Specifically, that meeting will be to get the best information as to the results of grants, forgivable loans, DES assistance and similar, to come to some numbers and timing for expected costs for the PFAS mitigation efforts that are required to happen there. We hope to be able to report those numbers and some possible funding ideas for Webster's portion of that at our next meeting here, which should be in about two weeks. So if you want to hear that information at the same time we do, you can of course attend the Hopkinton meeting. It is part of their standard Select Board meeting. Do we have any further announcements?
I have a few announcements. First is the office will be closed next Monday, October 14th, for Columbus Day. I'd like to thank the Select Board for giving us the day off. The town clerk's office, which is normally open Monday and Wednesday, will be open tomorrow and close Wednesday due to the town clerk conference that both Mary and Stephanie are attending. And finally, next Tuesday, October 15th, they'll be opening up the construction bids for Cloespin Bridge at 11:00 AM.
To the point that I was just looking up, tomorrow is the last point that you could possibly get one of those construction bids in. So if someone was interested in that, please contact us or VHB, the engineers that are, have been handling that for us. Dana can get you all the information. But we're finally moving ahead, construction bids are finally closing. We'll be able to get started on Cloespin Bridge soon.
Awesome.
Are there any further announcements from up here?
Not me.
Any from our...
Truck-a-treat on Halloween night, we haven't had it for the last few years because of COVID and then lack of staff. But the folks at the firehouse want to get together and try to make that happen again. So Captain Smith is running that ship, so what'd you say, five to eight?
Five Dana's truck-a-treat hours in town on the 31st.
I'm not quite sure I can get Dana the hours or Russell from Ben.
They normally try to do it the same time because it keeps the kids off the street more at the station.
That's all I have for announcement, thank you.
Awesome. Is the paving still going on or is that taken care of now?
The paving was all taken care of last Friday. The shoulder machine, I have rented that for the 28th and 29th to add the shoulder off to the side of the tire. So that was the soonest, quickest that we could get that, so that will happen the 28th and 29th. We went around today on some of the driveways that had the real bad dip, so they didn't screw up the cars and the Roby Road intersection and Manchester Drive where it went off. We tuned that stuff up today to take the curse off in it and so we get around.
I just wanted to, if we were still closing or delaying, I wanted to announce it.
No, everybody was great last Friday down to Pillsbury Lake, and I worked down there with that crew and I didn't hear anything from the White Plains Road and Roby Road folks. So everything went great, it turned out nice.
Very good.
Can I mention something about the holes on Detour Road? Are you planning to take care of them, I'm sure?
Let's go into more roadwork when he's up as the department head. I just wanted to take care of announcements. Anything else? Okay, so that moves us to our first appointment, trees on Dustin Road, come on down.
Richard, come and stiff up to the table.
How you doing?
Good, yourself?
Okay.
You want to just state the point or?
Well, I'll let you speak for yourself in a minute, but let me. Mr. Dufour came and has spoken with Emmett and he's also spoken with me. He lives on Dustin Road next to the property the town owns that we recently had trees removed for a gravel operation. I went down and looked at the area with him. I did send you, these probably don't do any, pictures may not do it justice, and I know what you've got wasn't very clear. But these are some of the pictures, and I'll let him tell you his concerns. But I will say that I have spoken with our insurance carrier, Primex, New Hampshire Primex. And of course, tree liability is if we know that there's a tree that's going to fall down and do damage. Now, I don't know if there's a specific tree, but I'll let him speak for himself.
And maybe you could kind of explain, explain some of these, the photos of to what, where you are compared to what these are.
This is the bottom of my yard right here.
Okay, you're over here.
Yep, yep, the other side.
Yeah.
All these trees right up here on the hill?
Yeah.
Ninety percent of them are either snapped in two or leaning right at me.
And that, and that just happened?
That happened last April.
Okay, okay.
You guys are welcome to come look at it if you need to, but most of the trees at the top are all gone right off.
Yeah.
This is my leach field, and I got my shed over here, which is right in line with everything that's, will be coming down. It's not wind, I mean if, it's gonna be wind, because it is gonna come down.
And they just, a bad wind went through or what do you, what do you feel that?
Well, a lot of it had warmed off up there, so now they're all open to the wind.
Okay.
That's where the bugs go.
Is this is where we cut for the pit right up?
That, we did, and I left the basal area and the boundary trees. And the reason I left them trees is so when this gentleman opened up his back door or mowed his grass, he didn't see a gravel pit. That was my reason for leaving them. We did clear that off, but it was not too much. Before we did that, another logging company logged the other piece on the same, on the same side, the way the wind goes right down the power lines, so it's right in line with the power lines there and...
So is this, this is before the cutting, or is this right?
Actually, it doesn't show on there, but if you go up and see where they cut down here, those trees actually come up like this.
Yeah, but, but this is, this is before, and then they cut and then now, because he was leaving this basin.
No, those were after the cutting.
After the cutting, so you, this is the basal area that Emmett was leaving?
Yeah.
So that, so you would look at it?
Yeah.
But then, you know, whatever, weather-wise, this...
The storm, the April storm where we cleaned trees up for two weeks?
Yeah.
Is when all this happened, and the big tree came down up the street, ruined the guardrails, and it was quite a storm.
And I cleaned up everything that was in my yard from the storm. It's everything that's gonna be coming down now, whatever's left there is a hazard, that, that's my issue.
We kind of looked and passed them that way, knowing that you know the trees a bit more than we do.
Well, I just, Mother Nature is more in charge than I am. That's some of the problem, I mean, you know, they, they left, this is from, probably this is from the pit side. Yeah, that, that's a good amount of, but then, you know, you get that, some storm that decides to come through.
If you look at it between my house and Teresa's house, I would cut back down in there. If you just stand on Teresa's side and look up, they're right out the open. All the big trees that were down there protected are all gone. Even the tree crew when they came in said they should take them, when Chuck was up there, and said, "Go ahead and take them." And they didn't. So it was recommended.
By who?
Chucky, Chuck Rhodes, the one that did the logging.
Yeah.
He said, "If you leave those there, they're gonna come down."
Did, did, was that, were you part of that discussion?
No.
Yes, he said...
Yeah, because I mean, in, in the case in this situation where Emmett was trying to be, uh, what do you, well, you know. I don't think you're saying that he's not.
No, I'm not saying that.
I'm not sure why that wasn't conveyed a little bit more clear.
But if you can see what's there now, it's a damage, my shed's right at the bottom, my leach field's at the bottom.
Some people like trees and some people know trees can do a lot of damage. But it's not...
Sometimes it's both.
Yeah, right? So I, I, I'm not sure why that wasn't conveyed to...
I, I don't know.
So how likely are these to actually come down like towards into his property and do damage versus just come down? Because like we have a whole bunch of trees that have been horrible, some of which have now been taken care of. But many of them just kind of collapsed on themselves and are right below where they are and they don't, it's not like the whole tree is tipping over. So how does that get kind of like looked at to be it is or is not a threat to over there?
Right, well, I mean, and Emmett's got as much logging experience as anybody. But it's just in how they're leaning and what they're doing and... I, it's kind of too bad that we're at this point because if you were willing for them to take them and then he would know that you didn't want the... Well, that's all good, but he hired Chuck.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have...
Chuck is, you know, should have gone to Emmett and said, "Hey, I spoke with," or somebody should have been notified. I mean, it's kind of like one of those things, actors spilled milk, in a sense. Because, you know, as, as people log their property every day, you, you leave a, you leave a basal area, but that doesn't mean that the person next to you is responsible for that those trees decide to do its thing. But, but, and I don't know how they're all leaning, you, you probably could answer to that better.
I went down there, the gentleman called, and I went down to visit with him and walk through there. And the ones to the left going up the stone wall aren't on our land, they're on the other, others. But the ones that we did leave, I mean, he, they are broken, some of them, and he did clean them up. And I mean, it was, I thought I was doing a stroke of business, so when he looked out the window to whatever, so I marked the whole area, so the three people I took down there to bid on the job saw the same thing. And that's what it was. And then there was another, another person on the other end of the property that we cut. And the person came out and said, "I'd like to have them trees gone." And she contacted me and she'd already talked to Chuck. And I went and told Chuck, "This lady would like them cut right to her boundary." And, and we did that while we were there. And I didn't know anything about over the other side because it would have been great to do it. Because now to go back to do it, it's a lot of money.
That's the problem.
And then to the left of where we, where, another reason I didn't cut that bank off is it, it's wetlands. On that left, then we have to stay out of there by, what is it, 150 feet? And I think we're probably like 75 feet. So I didn't want to open up a can of worms, but I mean, the gentleman does have a, an issue and I see his point. But I talked to Dana about it and maybe we can figure something out. I can't make the decision on spending money without...
Yeah, and I, I would need to, I, I wouldn't want to give it up. I mean, pictures are good, but, and, and I, I, I mean...
Sounds like it needs a, a visit.
Yeah. Not to say that, you know what I mean, but, but doing what we do, you, you know, he left the buffer. It's not, I don't know, the town, the town can only be so responsible for trees that...
But so the ones that are damaged now, they're gonna be coming down and causing damage.
Right.
So I'm trying to prevent that.
That's right, but they're again, the damaged trees are damaged not from the cutting, but from a storm. So that's, that's Mother Nature at its best, which thank God we don't live in North Carolina. But, yeah.
If you want to come on, you're, you're welcome to come on, you see what I'm looking at firsthand and...
I would say that, my personal opinion is, you call it tablet. And take a look at it and we'll do a little bit of research. Yeah.
And before we fully table the, the subject, where would this fall within, for example, Primex? Like what would they say or think about this at this point with it being brought to us versus, okay, you should wait?
Well, I think I would first of all ask if I could convince maybe someone to come out from Primex. That would be the best case scenario. But I do think that it may be a little different than what a normal scenario is. And I certainly can work with Primex to find out.
So if we know that and you get a chance to go look at them and we can bring it up at the, the next meeting when we hopefully have that information?
Right, I kind of wanted the board to be in on it before I started to...
Start the process.
Get into, get into looking at Primex, yeah.
The smallest that are damaged out here, there's a one, there's a couple now like 140 feet. And they're like 30 degree angle right towards my shed, leach field, everything, those are the ones that really just run away.
And those pictures probably don't do it an awful lot of justice, I know the photographer and...
There's a big difference in person when you say it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Anything further from the board or?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm sure we have that on our next agenda then. All right, that moves us forward to our next appointment, which is Pillsbury Lake Water District. Please come on down.
I'm very, what anybody says, I'm, and I don't want to touch the right wheel. I'm pressing right wheel, but come on down! Wish it was, yeah, right, right, yeah.
You can follow along.
So, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to discuss the current operating conditions of Pillsbury Lake Village District regarding the community water system. I've been told that you really haven't know a lot about what's going on there, some of you do or don't. So I just wanted to let you know a little bit about what's going on. As you know, the district was created in 1967 for the procurement of domestic water to maintain drain pipes, and that's in your packet there. And the district was primarily approved because having a community water system with the many posted size lots, they now would be able to build on them and they would eliminate the possibility of contamination between the septic and the private well. This was and is a significant benefit for persons in, in this area. And, and it's the reason that they were assessed for partial property tax support, whether they chose to use the community water system or not. You know, when you buy your home, you're informed that part of the taxes goes to sustain the community water system. Over the years, past boards did not keep up the community water system. And as a result, beginning in 2019, there was a major water shortage, I'm sure you're well aware of that. Many people put in private wells, so now the, so now the majority of residents have private wells. The Concord Drive Project in 2020 was the first major infrastructure renovation, and now there's no issues there. The current maintenance plans cause for repairs only with no major infrastructure improvements. Because of the loss of community water system owners, there's about 45 approximately remaining now, 45, 50, the unexpected benefit from the major loss of these owners is that it's much less, puts much less demand for water and may be able to reduce costs by going to one pump instead of two pump houses. The current board is made up of all private well owners. The Board of Commissioners, after one person objected to decades of partial property tax support, they sought out the opinion of New Hampshire Municipal Association, NHMA, advice and opinion, and you have that in your packet, on February 2024. And the attorney said, this is part of it, I'll just quote, "The village district should not be using taxpayer dollars to subsidize a water system that does not serve all the residents in the district. This is viewed as a fundamentally unfair practice where you are taxing people for something that they receive no benefit from. Furthermore, it is arguable that this is not legally acceptable," end quote. He goes on to refer to RSA 38, Section 28, which is in your packet, water rates to support his opinion, even though it is RSA 38, Section 27, Assessment for Water Supplies, that determines who should pay for the community water system, which includes in that section persons served by the community water system or whose lands receives special benefit from it. So based on Carroll's, that's NHMA's attorney's unfair practice, without any discuss, discussions of severe community water system financial ramifications or possible alternatives, a warrant article was quickly drafted in March that dissolved the partial taxation. The board, our current board represented and continues to represent that it is illegal and that their hands are tied, even though it was one person who objected and they said that they must move forward with the articles. Nowhere has, doesn't ever say that it's illegal. We have repeatedly asked that Carroll's opinion is incorrect, and we asked that they go back to Carroll to confirm that it is or isn't illegal and also to provide a legal opinion for recent retroactive billing that we were charged. We asked this in July, we still haven't gotten an answer. We're hoping at the next meeting we will get, you know, the response from NHMA. We also asked that they, the board notified water customers of the proposed water warrant articles, but they refused, saying the warrant articles were posted, that was good enough. We asked them to contact the, a private attorney to get a balanced opinion and maybe provide some alternatives for us, and that was refused, even though NHMA recommends seeking private counsel for any complex matters. So therefore, our water rate is now 16 cents a gallon to go up if anyone else goes off the system. And the, our water meter machine was broken. And so the prior quarters, we were not charged, we were just charged a base rate. That was for Q4 2023 and Q1 2024. However, they did some proportional billings, very difficult to understand, back billing, and they back billed us the new rate, saying that the bills are in their rears and that is how they did that. On top of that, houses were sold during this time period and some people went to private wells, and they would build the old rate during this period. And just saying, and basically said, you know, we, the current people have to bear the cost of, of their increased share. They, and so in summary, I guess that's, do they have anything else?
How, how do I?
What?
Can I get your name for the minutes?
Oh, this is John, my husband.
In summary, the town of Webster's property owners' values will be significantly adversely impacted upon the dissolution of the PLVD, and it is right now in financial trouble. So it is possible it could be dissolved. And if that happens, I'll remind you of the posted size lots who are now on the community water system. And if for any reason they have an issue because they're posted size lots, they'll have nowhere to go. There's no community water system. So they'll be sitting there in a house that doesn't have water. So we're, and we do understand that the town is separate from the PLVD. But we are requesting that the town communicate to the BOC with copy of, to the PLVD residents. The concern that the town has and we, CWS owners, and as my wife said, there may only be 45 homes left because each day somebody is saying adios.
Just to quickly clarify, you said CWS, do you mean Community Water System?
Yeah, Community Water, CWS, yeah, Community Water System. So we're asking the, your board, this board to contact the BOC and express the concern that you hopefully will have and the owners about the financial health. And we'd like you to express concern about, as my wife said, the rush to judgment, March meeting that passed the articles that dissolve the decades since 1967 of partial property tax support for the community water system. That was the death knell, that put us where we are. And what happened is when that came, we had a second mass exit of the water system. The first one, as some of you might remember, was back in 2019. And at that time, if my memory is correct, we might have had 220-odd community water system owners. So now think, today, as I said, there's 45, do the math, 45 now are stuck with it. The March meeting, death knell, was when they passed those articles, the loans also went on the backs of the owners. Not only the operation of the, of the water system, but the two loans that are outstanding.
That were voted on by the entire district.
Remember, the district voted as, as a district for those loans. And now, according to the articles... And now, according to the articles, and again, we don't, we don't think that Cal's decision is a correct one. Not only the wrong RSA, okay, but just logical, doesn't make sense. So we're looking for you to notify the board about our concern, your concern. Urge the board, this is what's essential. We've asked them ten times, one of them's here tonight. Asked them several times to go back to the NHMA and ask them to reaffirm their decision about it being unfair practice. Not saying it's illegal, unfair practice is what their attorneys say. And the second thing we're asking, when they go there, ask them about the back billing that my wife described. And I want you to think about it. They went, because the meter wasn't working for nine months, when they got it working, when they went back to read it, the Q four, two thousand and twenty-three and Q one, two thousand and twenty-four, because they had the opportunity now, because the meter was working, read it and decide at that point that they're going to change the rate from a flak rate, which I think was three hundred and thirty-seven dollars, if you use three thousand gallons, to sixteen cents. It doesn't make sense that you can go back and decide arbitrarily that you're going to change the rates. Now, they can change the rates, they have all the right to. So when they change it for Q two, sixteen cents, which is a death knell in itself, we agreed reluctantly because, to pay that at sixteen cents, because they had the right to do it. We're not happy with it, okay? So we also would like you to confirm in the packet you have, you'll see, there's a board meeting back in sixty, whatever it is, signed by the board, that PLVD was established in June seventeen, nineteen sixty-seven for the purpose of supplying water and domestic purposes, main drains and common sewers. No common sewers, obviously, wherever established. But we'd like, especially because of the posted size lots.
And we're continually told by the board that it's not a water district.
Over and over again.
When we have the papers, they're saying exactly that it is, in fact, a water district.
The last thing is, is to urge them to reach an amicable settlement that addresses the March articles, and I think they were four, six and seven, if my memory is right, and the retroactive billing. It cannot stand. Q four, two thousand and twenty-three and Q one, two thousand and twenty-four cannot stand where you can go back and decide you come on up with a new method, that I still don't understand, and a new rate. The best they can do, that they can do, is they could have left the rate exactly the way it was, I think, three thirty-seven, for three thousand gallons a quarter. And if you used more, you paid a little more. If you used less, you paid a little less. They have the right to do that. Now, some people might say, if they do that, what do you think they're gonna do in Q three? They're gonna just up the rates. But we'll deal with it. So that's it, that's why we're here. Questions?
So you pointed out that there is a commissioner here. So I would like to invite them to come down if they would wish to maybe answer one or two of the basic portions of this. And we don't want this to turn into a debate. We know that this is commission business, not select board business. But I'd like to give you a moment to at least respond to a couple of the questions that were asked. And I will point out that the, obviously, there's, we're not in charge of you in any way, shape or form. So even if we were to send all of the things that you requested, that they have, it does nothing to them. They have no reason to have to do any of those things. And before he goes on, since you mentioned dissolution or dispersion of the district, that is something that's actually come up repeatedly over many years at this point. And if something like that were to happen, just to kind of clarify the process and what would happen. If something like that were to happen, the town would get all of the assets as well as all of the debts, but also still the tax overlay and the district as an independent tax overlay system area. So it would not affect Webster as a whole because it would be the individual Pillsbury Lake Village District lots that would then be taxed to run the system, et cetera. So it's not something where you're making it out that every taxpayer in Webster is going to have a problem for tax values and land values. It would be maintained within Pillsbury Lake Village District. So it is absolutely possible for something like that to happen. As I've typically said, when people ask me, it can happen. The only benefit is that you don't have to think about anything because you've lost your say in everything in Pillsbury Lake because then it's just up to the town. So I encourage you not to dissolve, but that's my thing there. I did see a hand, but I'm going to go ahead and let you respond first.
Thank you. So I'm here on other business this evening?
Yes.
No intention to be here otherwise.
Can you speak up just a little louder?
Of course, of course, I'm sorry. A little taken aback. So I'm here on other business, personal business regarding our own home tonight and just happen to be here. And I fully respect the position that these folks are in because the water system in PLVD has become incredibly expensive for many of the reasons that they have outlined. I would dispute some of the characterizations as to what led us here, and I'm not going to go deeply into that. I don't think that's a benefit to all. Although I would follow the thread generally to say we have had numerous complaints about being billed for a water system from which people were taking no benefit. That's why we went to NHMA and received a ruling or advice or whatever you want to call it, which said, no, you really can't do that. And even if somebody, you know, disputes that, it's an unfair practice under New Hampshire law. As a result of that, after numerous meetings, going through all of the debates leading up to the annual meeting and then having a warrant article in place, there was no rush to judgment. There was, we sought every input we could get. Unfortunately, it came down in such a way that the district voted that the people on the water system would pay for the operation, which was the attorney's advice. And that's the path forward that we have taken. As a result of that, instead of spreading the cost of the operation of the system over, call a number, four hundred homes, now it's over fifty homes. So yes, the cost has gone up dramatically. And we are very aware of that. We are trying to work with DES, we are trying to work with legislators, we are looking for every avenue we can find for some sort of relief to help the situation. It's really untenable for many residents. We have offered payment plans to anyone that will get on the phone and call us and say, I can't pay this. What can you take? We are doing everything we can to make this as unobtrusive to the residents of the village that we can. The fact that we are all water well, private well owners on the commission is an absolute non-argument. We begged, we begged all over the district for people to come and try to run last March, to be on the committee. Please represent, there was zero interest. I'm on this commission personally, ran unopposed, didn't want to be there. But I didn't want us to be shorthanded. So I'm not worried about my situation. I'm just saying how hard we tried and then it hit. Now it's, let's go back, let's revisit all these conversations we had with attorneys. Let's go back, why can't we talk some more about what is the legal alternative to bail us out? And that has been the position of the board at this point. We have a lot of pressure, every meeting, to have these incredibly long sessions going back and rehashing. And we're not going to go back until we look hard enough to find another attorney or another situation that's going to provide us some other advice as to how we should have dealt with the situation. We took our best advice, we got a community vote and we moved forward. And that's where we are. And it's unpleasant and the costs are high. So all we can do is try to mitigate those costs the best we can. And I could go on much, much longer, but there's no point. It's, there's no insensitivity here. This is horrible for everyone involved. So having said all that, we are moving forward. We are trying to interact. I would encourage all PLVD residents, whether they're water system users or on private wells, to stop doing these types of things where, and I'm stepping out here, I apologize, but, you know, instead of coming to selectmen without even alerting us or filing various complaints without talking to us or what have you.
Or we have tried talking to you.
Or setting up a website where they exclusively decide who can be on so they can locally conjugate their concerns. It doesn't help. We have to do this as a community, we have to find our ways out. So that's where we are as a board at this point. We are doing the very, very best we can and we're doing what we can to try to suppress the costs.
So I know there was a hand, I'll put in one suggestion. This is just me, not the board or anything. Having been through various NHMA things in the past, of course, one of the things that they always say is make sure that you contact your towns or in your case, probably the village districts own lawyer. Regardless of what was said there, and even if that's, I'll assume it's a hundred percent true for the moment, for the purpose of this, that yes, that is the way that everybody that's a lawyer would agree with. Even if that's the case, I would encourage you to ask your own lawyers, I believe are the same ones the town used to use, but I would encourage you to reach out to them and ask if the loans that the district as a whole voted to take out should still fall upon the backs of the whole district that approved it instead of only the water users. Obviously, the operating portion of it makes sense. But again, this is just a friendly suggestion because we don't get to say anything, but I've. Fortunately, unfortunately, I've been through a lot of legal with NHMA and similar than sitting up here, so.
I appreciate that recommendation. And I have not been the person on the board in communication with NHMA, but I will go back and I will ensure that the separate portion of the loan payment was equally discussed and clarified during those conversations. I will share that when we went to NHMA, there was a somewhat bewilderment on their side as to, why are you here again, asking the same question? And it's because it's a new board and we come in, we have no track record, we have no history, there's no recorded history. And so we played catch-up. And in doing that, NHMA said, no, you've been here like, if I give a number, three times before. I'm not sure that's exactly right, but prior boards had gone down the same path. And when they got that painful advice that you can't do it this way, they were reticent to act. So for whatever reason, now is the moment. And our chair led us to this direction. I support our chair. I have no question of his judgment. And we are simply trying to play now the hand we were dealt.
I think the two prior boards, as Michael has said, it's clear why they did not go forward. Because of the nightmare that we're in. And Michael mentions that we did form a group called the Community Water Advocacy Group, who's exclusively laser focused only on the community water system issues, nothing else. The same model that is used, Michael used it for his Love the Lake, and it's effective. So we decided to use the same thing. And it has borne some fruits because we're getting feedback. And he's correct, it's exclusive. Only community water system owners can join because we don't want any other noise. We only want people who can contribute to that single issue. We don't want to talk about any other issues.
So thank you and thank you. I will comment from, again, my perspective here on the town. Of course, whatever happens at the annual meeting, when the voters vote on it, that's what happens and what they're in the position of having to do and what we're in the position of having to do based on what gets voted on. So I would highly suggest that if you don't get everything that you're hoping for out of the commissioners, that you go find your own legal counsel and advice. And if they say that it's completely different, you can write up a warrant article, a petition warrant article, have that put forward and put on that at annual meeting. And you can have everybody vote to change the way that that works. That's about as far as we can go. I did see a hand, so I wanted to recognize that before we move on to the next item.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. As far as, I live in the district and I've been on both sides. I had a well, I no longer have, I mean, I was on a public system, but now I have a well. The reason I got off was I received a bill in two thousand and nineteen for a new well that they put in that was given to community well, community water users only. It wasn't distributed among everybody, it was full. And at that point, I said, okay, I know costs are going up because people are getting off the system. So I did some research and discovered that water is a utility and utilities are not paid by non-users. Just like if you're off the grid, you don't get an electric bill, no matter what. Even if, you know, even if the electric company takes out loans or does anything, they don't bill people who don't use electricity. So I got off the system in two thousand and nineteen and have had a well ever since. But I, the reason I, the main reason I got off was because I could see that the costs were going to go up per user, mostly because of that reason, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing. Sorry that we can't actually do much of anything to help you, but hopefully this bridge enlightened for everybody. And you're already up here. So next on the appointments, it's time for your driveway.
It is. So I have a really lousy home printer that is due for replacement. So I've made one copy of a set of pictures that I'd like to share across the board while we chat about this. So as you know, my name is Michael Malik. My wife and I live at one twenty-seven New Hampshire Drive, which is near the end of the cul-de-sac, where the last property before New Hampshire Drive goes gravel. So that's where we are up there. So we recently had our driveway paved. A year ago, Harrison's paving and we had a meeting. They were the ones who had an appropriate bid with the right offerings of service and so they were the ones we chose. We had them out. We had them out, and they said, you should get some loan delivered, so that once the driveway is paved, you can pack some loam along the edges until it clears, and make sure it's, you know, and you don't back off the edge and collapse it. So, um, through a friend, we contacted Emmett, he was nice enough to bring out some loan that we offered to buy, and he was nice enough to deliver it for free. And when he was there, he said, make sure, when these people come out, we get a permit. I said, thank you, we will. So, we contracted with Harrison's, they weren't able to do the work that year, they came back this year, we were on the calendar in September. October, September. So, um, what happened is, when they came out, in my mind, I had already spoken with them last year and said, okay, we have to get a permit. They said, don't worry, we handle all of that. And I said, terrific. Now, here they come the next year, I've already dismissed this from my mind, saying, they handled this stuff, okay, great. I didn't have any idea whatsoever that they couldn't have handled it in Webster, because the property owner has to sign the permit application. I didn't know that, my bad, I just didn't know that. So, you know, being a PLVD commissioner, I try to set a bit of an example, and so anytime we added propane to our house for a generator in a fireplace, we rewired our kitchen, we, uh, so I, I came to Webster and I got the appropriate inspections. We, uh, we took out an old decrepit dock, and then added a new one, and put a deck on the back of our house. I went to DDS and got the appropriate waterfront permits and permitting notifications. So, you know, we try to behave appropriately within the regulatory confines of our area. So, um, when the driveway was paved, the pitch of the land near the street was not altered. It was a flat, non-gravel, pretty pithy sandy driveway. And we have two trees on either side at the end of our driveway. So, what happens is when you pull off New Hampshire Drive, there's a bit of a rise because of the roots of those trees, and it extends back about 12 feet, and then pitches all the way back towards the house. Now, when Harrison's came in, they followed that same pitch. I would have thought that even if they didn't pursue the permit in town, they would have known the town regulations, which call for a certain, um, pitch of the driveway away from the street edge before any sloping begins. In our situation, to be frank, it would have been somewhat difficult to accomplish that, because where the tree roots are, they would have had to come back a fairly significant distance. I'm not saying they shouldn't have or whatever, but they, again, they just laid the pavement where the lay of the land was. And so, um, all right, so the street itself is 18 feet wide and is crowned in the center, so that the height from the center of the street to our driveway edge is about two inches. Um, it's also pitched to the south, so that the grade of the street drops about a half of inch per foot. So, it's a pretty steady grade away from our property as well. And so, um, what we've done is, since we became aware of the error of our ways, um, we've gone out and said, so how much of a problem really is this? And we took a hose, and we ran water, and on top of that, we poured two five-gallon buckets of water. And one of the pictures in the drawing shows you, the water didn't even run to the street. Between the pitch of the drive, the pitch of the road, and the fact that, that two-inch curve to the road surface, plus the fact that the first nine feet of our driveway rises about an inch and a half, so it's not severe. It's not like pouring out. It causes a bit of a V, and the water fills into that V and goes to the south and goes right into the swale. So, there, there's really no water washing onto the street. That all said, I understand, it's still not up to spec. If you look at New Hampshire Drive, right at our property, on our line where it goes from pavement to gravel, there's a bit of a hole there. And in that hole, which is 10-foot radius likely, uh, approximate, um, water gathers there all winter, it becomes a small ice skating rink. We had a skiff of snow on top of it a couple of years ago, my wife walked across it on top of the snow, fell down, really racked her elbow, had to go to the doctor giving these rays, okay? So, I mean, I'm not saying multiple wrongs make a right, but New Hampshire's not like this perfect road where all the drives are correctly pitched and everything else. And so, again, multiple wrongs don't make a right, but on the other hand, ours, when you pour the water on, the water doesn't even come on to the street. So, having done it wrong, my hope is, we can move forward and say, okay, let me make a donation to the library fund, you know, and apologies for having blown it, I, I missed a beat, I didn't come back and make sure the permit was filed. But at the same time, there, these regulations are in place for public safety, and I don't see what our driveway, the way it wound up getting done, is really affecting public safety. The last thing I would share is that there are a couple of things in the regulations I'd like to point out, which says, for instance, um, there are phrases such as, "When possible, driveway should be constructed to slope downward from the street edge," et cetera, et cetera. And that's difficult in our instance, because of those trees and the root systems and everything else. Or another phrase says, "Driveway should disrupt natural water flow patterns as little as possible." So, there's some fluidity in the regulations as well. I'm not asking you to throw out the book, I'm, I'm asking you to look at the scenario and just say, hm, nope, we didn't do it right. But in the end, it's, it's kind of a no harm, no foul type situation. And I appreciate Emmett, I appreciate all you guys and your hard work, and trying to make this place safe for all. I just don't think this is a scenario where our, my error in not getting the permitting done properly is really a threat to the public good. So, that's, that's what I'm asking, is that you, you look at the scenario and say, yeah, we didn't do it right, but there was no intent, and there's really no long-term damage here. And Emmett, I appreciate your patience through all of this, and if you'd like to rebut, I, I would, maybe you would have, but I, I would just as soon ask him to, because he, he does so much for us, and I don't want to make your life harder by a situation in front of our driveway either, so.
So, thank you for your presentation. Uh, I do want to let Emmett talk if he wants to, but before we go there, can you tell us how we got here and why he's here and not planning board, or that sort of thing?
Well, it's, co-enforcement's the select board, you're the first meeting before the planning board. And with the letter, we gave him two weeks of time to fix the issue, and there would not have been a planning board meeting before the issue would have had to have been fixed. So, this is the one meeting he could have made.
Okay.
And the letter's already gone out, so this is where we are now.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Emmett, if you'd like to say anything about this driveway.
I took an alt to follow direction, and that's what I was doing, and here, here we are.
Okay. So, that sounds.
I guess, I mean, he dumped the water on it, but I just, the way it rains today, and two and a quarter inches of rain the last time it rained, and I just, in, in, it was brought to my attention, it, there was a lot of driveways in the, on New Hampshire Drive that weren't up to par, and there is, there's a lot of them, but that was long before my time, I had no say. And I just, I, the planning board asked me to do a job, and just trying to do my part.
Perfect, thank you.
Somebody they can get together and go take a look at it, and if they're, if the planning board's happy with how it all turned out, then they're my bosses.
So, Russ, how we, what are options for us to move forward from here?
So, the options are, if it's a major concern, the drainage, one option is to have Emmett fix it, and then we can bill it to you, so that it's not an issue for this winter. The other options, like you said, we can go to the planning board and discuss it with the planning board and see if they're okay with it, but if there's issues, there's issues.
Do you, you want to give it some time to see what's going to happen and address it, and?
And there's that option, you could.
You mean, leave it for the winter?
Well, keep an eye on it and see if it comes out, because, I mean, if the, if the water comes out into the road, and I get a call out, it's a four-hour call out, so there's $600 to get down there, pull a little sand out.
Oh.
And it, it, um.
But this has just happened, you, you've had this in the past.
Correct, it's, we've had one little rain, it was yesterday.
No, no, so, right, so it wasn't last winter, it was just now.
No, no, it's, in, um, I mean, I can't overrule the planning board or the select board, but, um, if he's done all that, like he's saying, in, I mean.
He's tried hard.
But, um, I don't have the final say at the end of the day, I mean, it's the planning board.
Hey, I add something, please. So, um, Harrison's has committed to me that if something had to be fixed on an emergency basis, they're not going to leave me. So, I appreciated that from them. A little surprised they didn't know how they were supposed to do it in the first place, but at least they're standing by it. Um, they also said that they shut down operations as of November 1st, or the prior weekend, whatever that is.
Which is cold.
Yeah.
It doesn't work as well when it's cold.
So, if it would be an acceptable alternative, I would be more than happy to observe it through the winter with Emmett, as you choose Emmett, and.
Well, that, I can't make that decision, that's up to the plan.
That's my ask here, is I, is could we look at it through winter? We don't believe, I wouldn't want to cause a disruption, a problem, or what, if it's a problem in the winter, surprisingly, I'll throw my own sand on it. I'm, I'm not going to let something happen, but the point is, I don't think the way it's pitched, it's going to. So, could we get through winter? I'll take Emmett's input, I'll provide my input, we can take pictures, maybe revisit this in spring and see if it is going to be a long-term problem.
When does the planning board meet next?
Next Thursday.
Yeah, a week from Thursday, right?
The 17th.
I don't really want, me personally, I'm not speaking for the board, uh, I don't personally want to decide one way or another without input from the planning board, who would normally be the ones that would look at the driveways? Because we've certainly heard your side, which sounds plenty reasonable, but I want to make sure that the normal processes would, of inspecting and looking and going through that would actually happen before we say, oh yeah, it'll be fine if it's not, or rip it all up if it is. So, uh, is that something where we could suggest that it be done as a driveway permit and evaluation through planning board before we try to decide on something?
So, it's already dropped a driveway permit off at the town retrospectively, so I can bring that up at the next planning board meeting. Or alternatively, we can have you and Craig go out and look at it, unless you want the whole planning board to get involved instead.
Oh, I think, I mean, I, I think I should just step back and let the planning board decide on that, and then I'm good at the end of the day, and.
Okay. As, as our representative to the planning board, any thoughts?
I'm taking this all in.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, there are what, one, two, three, four of us?
So, I guess I just want to ask a question as devil's advocate. And, and maybe, as we talk about lots of things, so maybe we've discussed this and I've kind of missed it, but, okay, because sometimes I'm like, oh crap, was I there?
I know, I don't, I don't remember.
Yes. So, so my question would be, let's, let's rewind the tape. He's going to get his driveway paved, and Harris is supposed to come in and meet with you apparently, or get your advice on it, or what, how does that work?
The people get the driveway permit through Russell. Russell contacts.
But he, he already had a driveway though, right?
Right.
Yeah, he's just having it paved.
Right, but.
But that's considered a material change.
Yeah, okay.
So, and that's not a rule that I made, that's.
No, no, and I'm not, I'm just trying to understand exactly, even though I probably should know it better.
And then you get a permit, and then Russell sends, I come down and see Russell and Craig from the planning board that's designated through you people to work with the driveway.
Right.
We go out and look things over.
Yeah.
Make sure the backlash is there, and everything is up to par. And then we come back and we sign the construction part of it.
Okay.
They do the job, we go out and check it, and then we come back and sign the, the, it's okay, thank you, you did a great job.
So, would that be winding, and thank you for that, wit, what would you, what would have, you, what do you think you would just said, you need to add more material to make sure it's shedding the water more correctly, or what would have been your, if, if it had done, been done the way that the rules read?
A half an inch per foot for four feet, so that's two inches four feet back, that it drops away from the 5% of crown that you have already there. So.
And that's what, and that's what he's lacking right now, some of the crown.
And what a lot of folks don't realize is, you don't own to the, to the tire, you own to your boundary pin, which is anywhere from 10 to 15 feet in from the side of the tire, 25 feet from the center of the road, that's three rod, 16 and a half feet in a rod, times three is 49 and a half feet. So, um, that gives the town what they need for their ditches and their snow and, and all that. So, that's another part of the, the permit is, the driveway that we're really concerned about is on-town property.
Right.
And the town owns the land in Pillsbury Lakes, the roads in Pillsbury Lakes aren't right of ways, they're owned by the town.
We just don't have the water. We don't have the water.
No, we don't want, we don't.
No, but I just, you know, when you think about this whole situation, you go, wow. And so, with that being said, what happened was he paved it, and then you went out and said, this is, this is not pitching correctly.
Correct, in.
And then there was a problem.
Then I talked to the young man, and we went from there. So, just trying to do it right, he was trying to do it right, and, and here we are.
So, thank you both for the process on that. Uh, I did see a hand, I don't, don't want to turn this into a planning board deliberation.
Absolutely not.
But, yes.
Real quick recommendation, um, I would recommend Emmett and a member of the planning board, um, hopefully Craig, to go out and discuss it and bring that information to the next planning board meeting, so we can officially discuss it.
That sound reasonable?
I think that's something we're talking.
I just wanted to.
So, does that come back to the selectmen after the planning board okay, if they okay it?
It depends on what the planning board wants to recommend.
Okay.
At that point, I think.
Okay, so it depends on, so may that come back to us?
It might come back to us if they recommend that there's an enforcement action. If, if they don't, then it probably doesn't come back here.
Okay, well, hopefully, just for, all for a dry one.
All for a dry one.
One of our highly, most highly regulated things here in town.
That's right, yeah.
Isn't that ironic?
Yeah, bill, hence the way bill it.
Is the board in agreement that you should send it over, have the planning board send us a recommendation on what they want to do?
Yeah, that's.
Thank you.
I'm sorry that that delays it more, if you do need to contact them, but.
No, that's okay, and you know what, so, again, Emmett, in his enforcement capacity, had given us a very short window to resolve the situation, and I'm just like, please don't rip up my driveway, this is not.
Well, the reason for that is I know when the tire plant's closed too. If I gave you two months, then. If I'd have gave you two months, then it would have been June.
Yeah, so, uh, a- a- and I absolutely fully respect that, and he's just doing his job a thousand percent, I get it. Um, so, I just didn't want it all ripped up before we had a chance to walk through whatever process might be available to us. And for those planning board members that might be here, when we have a conversation about this later, my hope is that the worst-case situation from our position would be, let's watch it for winter, and let's see if it really is a problem, and if it is, I'll rip the damn thing up. We'll get it done right, but I don't want Emmett to do it. I want Harrison's back there to do it right, you know?
I don't think they will, they're pretty good guys.
They are.
Yes.
They are.
And they know they need a permit, because Steve and I stopped and saw them not too long ago, so they know how things were.
Yeah, I just don't think they would, they've been in business for a while.
Wouldn't you think?
Yes.
Surprise, surprise.
He took it over from his father, correct, or is his father still in business?
His father's still in it.
Yeah, I think they're competitors or something.
So, anyway, the bottom line is, we may not be able to fix it this year, even if you guys said it really should be repaired. And, so, it's either back to gravel for the winter and mud season, or it's, can we look, I think, is, is the, the worst-case ask.
Well, thank you, and, uh-
Thank you, everybody.
Planning board can work something out that's too well for all of us.
Sorry to expend your time based on my lack of oversight of Harrison's.
All right. That moves us to the next item, which is why planning board people decided to show up, I believe, which is the Watson Amherst Drive.
I didn't know that we were here, that is, I mean, I'm crazy.
Yeah, well, it was supposed to be a, just to talk about what you're- Yeah, I didn't know Craig was gonna show up.
I didn't expect to be on, I didn't expect to be on the, uh-
Hot seat?
Yeah.
Well, come on down.
Planning board hot seat.
All right, Russ, take us through this.
So where we left off was the select board wanted to get opinions from the planning board on how they felt about the development suggestion made by Pete Swazlowski, and they felt that it would be a good idea to sit down with some members of the planning board to further the discussion and kind of flush it out.
Didn't we already send our recommendations?
Yep. I think you did, was the two-acre plus lots were acceptable as long as they had wells.
Okay.
But I think the select board wanted a little bit more input, and that's why we contacted you back. We felt that a further discussion might be more, or anything.
It was probably in the packet when we did that, but I don't remember seeing the input from them.
I think it had stuff to do with how you might handle the the bidding, and then the town can do, basically whatever you want, and how you set this up. And then there were some talks about how you would handle the street, which is great for having Emmett here. And, yeah, okay. Cause there's a lot involved with that process, and who would be handling what, even if you decided to go out and put it out for bid in the first place.
Had a map, okay, there's the map. So, we have maps in our packet for this.
Hmm.
Sorry that not everybody is, is seeing that. Uh, Amherst, so a quick summary, Amherst Drive is part of the original subdivision plan and layout for Pillsbury Lake. Uh, it is a discontinued slash paper road that either only partially existed or doesn't exist currently. Uh, and it is off of Manchester Drive, uh, over near the end of Manchester Drive, and basically, oh, I can't scroll that way. Uh, so basically, right near the end of Manchester Drive, if you're driving towards the end and the power lines, it would be on the left. Um, so the town owns several of the lots that are on that, I believe it was seven, seven, three, four, five, yes. So seven that are within inside the circle of that Amherst Drive.
I think we have three more on the outside.
I believe we do, but those are not part of the current
Right.
discussion and possible bidding. Um, and, so, the existing, uh, lot sizes are one-point-six, point-three-six, point-seven-one, point-four-six, point-seven-six, point-four-one. I think that's point-four, but it's partially covered, uh, acres per lot. So they're all rather small, all of them except for two, well, more than half or under half an acre. Um, and, we were trying to come up with, if we were going to allow someone to bid to construct this, uh, A, what would we be looking at as far as road quality, which I would gather from myself, would be bring it up to full road standards before then asking the town to adopt it. Uh, and the, but requiring that they bring it up to that even if it maintains as a private road. Um, and there's plenty of things to discuss, private versus public road, I don't want to go there right now. Um, but there's plenty of reasons to not want to do private roads. Um, the second major concern that we and the public seem to share was the size of the lots, not having too many in, in too small an area, or too quickly building population. I believe that Pillsbury Lake management that no longer exists, uh, was that they only were to have three lots, or three houses built in the district per year?
No, that's part of our zoning ordinance, there's a growth control, and it's based on two percent of the total houses in the district, roughly come down to three-point-seven permits per year.
Okay, thank you. And so, uh, there's the growth aspect. Um, but of course, all of these are, uh, pretty much next to each other, there's one lot that's kind of in the middle of it all. Uh, but they're basically all next to each other. And so, we were contemplating in the public hearing from what we had heard from people, uh, that, well, maybe there should be two, or three, or four houses that are total allowed to be built on this, and to have some form of plan to do that correctly. Uh, to make it be put together as one unit, and then go through the planning board process of subdivision to do it correctly. Except that there isn't a specific person that owns it to do that yet. Um, so, we wanted to try to encapsulate those sorts of ideas within whatever would be the bid spec, while also then, uh, as Russ has gone to, uh, central planning and others to clarify that we can make sure that anyone who does bid can guarantee that they will be able to do the work within a certain period of time. And, because for example, we wouldn't want, well, we bought it all, we can do anything we want, we put up one house and made a long dirt driveway, even though we said we were gonna do the whole road. Or we put up three houses but never finished the road. Uh, so we don't want to be able to go into those situations without some sort of legal recourse towards the developer. So that's, I think, what got us here. Um, and then the rest, uh, the, please talk us through how we should really try to look at this.
So I think the major concerns are, one, the road, you want to make sure the road gets built. Because if the road gets built, even if somebody develops it, that's now a road, which means the lots become buildable lots, so even if they do get sold, it's still something that somebody can sell to somebody else and build a house. Two, if you want the lots to be more in line with two-acre or one-and-a-half to two-acre lots, I would suggest merging them ahead of time, it really wouldn't be a subdivision, you'd be really merging the lots into where you think the houses should go. And then, coming up with some sort of idea of what, how many houses you want to put into the project, and then request bids from qualified contractors who would be able to pull off a project like this, and have them present maybe to the select board, the planning board, what their bids are, come on with that. And then you can choose whichever project you feel is the best one. Because remember, it's not like the town's gonna make money off of this, you're just, you're just choosing whatever is best you feel for the town. So that's kind of my thoughts.
We would basically make the back taxes that have not been paid on these towns, uh, I'm sorry, on these existing lots that have nothing on them, so it's, while it's significant, because it's been a long time, it's not really significant in the course of someone being able to build a house on it, it's still pretty cheap land. So, should we be going further into this now, should we be requesting like, how many houses and what kind of divisions, and let the planning board talk about it, i- in the planning board itself?
Like, wasn't there someone that came inquiring about purchasing those?
Yes.
And had his own scenario of what he was gonna do?
He did have that scenario, that was, uh, Pete of, um, Granite Roots. Uh, construction. Uh, but, as part of our policies, like, we can't just, well, technically, we can say, we'll just sell it, but our policies say that, like, in general, we should be doing everything in an open, transparent bidding way. And, the general consensus, there were a couple in opposition that thought, yeah, make as many as possible. Uh, but the general consensus was, this is a good idea, but we don't want to just open it up and have tons of small houses going everywhere. Uh, so, we're trying to accomplish what the public told us they wanted us to. And, we could certainly request that Pete wanted to go talk to you, but then he's doing the work for any developer that would win the bid, which may or may not be him. So it's not really fair to him either.
I mean, he kind of was the one that brought it to everybody's attention.
But he would certainly, he, he may certainly have
It's kind of a hard, hard thought.
Ideas and opinions if, 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 I mean, we're wanting to ask him of what things might be good.
And he also owns several of the lots
Yeah.
That are nearby.
Uh, are nearby, so, even if he wasn't selected, he would stand to benefit if the road was built, because then he would get several new buildable lots out of it.
That kind of goes along with what Pillsbury Lake is set up as, the fact that they want people to build a purchase.
Right.
The property that, like, like first refusal, makes sense.
Back in the eighties, yes, I believe back in the eighties, there was some language regarding the association of having a right to first refusal. So I think that's one thing that I already looked at in the deets.
I think that we have to do that before we sell any lot, it's give the neighbors or somebody that's directly-
The association as a whole is set of just abutters, it isn't just the abutters, it's actually the association.
Oh, I think we just-
It doesn't exist anymore.
It doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah.
I think we, we've always done like the abutters, though, correct?
Right, yes.
Just as a commissioner who happens to be in the room, I would think it would make a lot of sense for us to have a joint conversation, especially if there are conversations about potential lot line adjustments, or how the la- land might be severed. Uh, just to ensure that the beneficial use matches our intent.
And I, and I believe we had requested something from the commissioners, I don't know if it
Not yet.
Made it over, oh, not yet, we just talked about doing it, once we get somewhere, got it.
Once we got somewhere, yeah, got somewhere, yeah.
So other than the water, as the commissioners, what say do they have? I mean, not, not to crap on anybody, but-
I agree.
As a, as a-
At this point, in, in, this is again me, in my opinion, at, at this point, my goal, if I'm including, for example, the commissioners, which we had said we wanted to try to do, um, is to make this work for the community. And, as the people who are elected by that community, they should be able to come to the table and offer some inputs, and some opinions, and some thoughts that maybe we don't have, because we're not there all the time. Uh, and the same towards the planning board, et cetera. So, that, that's kind of where that comes from, it's not that they have a legal right to necessarily tell us anything.
You know, I was just-
Yes.
And, and you, you're a hundred percent right, people talk and give different ideas and make a better community out of the place.
Right.
So, if I could ask a question, do, it maybe haven't got this far, but, are you gonna, are you gonna put them together, is, is the town gonna sell them all when it goes out to bid? One lump sum for them all, or are you gonna take bids on each and every, each and every lot, because if it's each and every lot, then six different people could bid on each one of them different lots, or am I drink, am I thinking this wrong?
But there's no road.
Yes, so you have the right thought
Right.
And the right question.
Is there something, a project?
And, and when we originally looked at it, the main problem is that there isn't a road.
Correct.
And, as a result, rather than trying to, well, we'll sell a lot to a, a butter, or we'll open up these lots to be sold, to be built, it was, we really need to do this as a solid, it's an entire project, because that person does it.
Okay, that's, that's-
So that's why we're in this, instead of individuals.
So that's your plan, that's, yeah, that's awesome.
So, yes.
Just easy questions, um, while there's not a road, I'd be interested in knowing if in fact there is a right-of-way, because that could affect access as well. If there's a town-owned right-of-way for that loop road, then if somebody across that proposed road wants to buy a lot separately, they wouldn't own whatever margin in between them had been appropriated as a right-of-way. So, it may be in the overall best interest of the community if the residents would want to buy a single lot to add with their own backland, or what have you, then perhaps, we would all agree to go through the appropriate process to dissolve that right-of-way, or that type of thing. Which is the only reason I'm encouraging a conversation, as to better the most appropriate use, and making the land available to those who might be there a- and are used to it as open acreage now, just a suggestion.
So, in two thousand and seven, the town voted to do a way with them roads in Pillsbury Lake, if my, mine, uh, is with me, so when they did this, how did they go about that, when they gave, when they discontinued Amherst Drive and Rogers Drive, and, um, there was two or three others, and they, they discontinued them roads in Pillsbury Lake, so what did that mean by discontinuing them roads? The town gave their, I, I don't understand that.
It just means where they're discontinued, they've become a class-six road, which it already was, because it was a paper road.
I don't, did they, when they discontinue a road, I, e- because they wanted to discontinue some class-six roads that same day.
Right.
And, I didn't let that happen, they listened to me, and we kept them as a class-six road, so we could use them for fire roads and stuff, but, um, I don't believe, and I'm not a lawyer, but when a town discontinues a road, I, I'd like to know what, I don't believe it goes to a class-six road, that's, but that's just me, but, somebody should look that up.
I think it depends on how the warrant article is written. Um, normally, road discontinuances would then revert to the property owner.
Right. Correct.
Centerline, both sides.
Um, although, there are different ways that warrant articles could be written, so, we can take a look at that.
Yeah, no, no, I just don't understand it, and that's why I'm asking.
No, I think it's a good question.
So we don't end up in trouble.
It's a good question.
I'm pretty sure it was two thousand and seven.
I think you're right.
Okay.
Lot sizes, once this is done, does the town's lot size regulation overshadow something that's at Pillsbury, is there conflict between lot sizes?
So the lot sizes don't equate to the same thing?
Right.
Uh, outside of Pillsbury Lake, I believe it's still at, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's still at five?
Yeah.
And, is it half now in Pillsbury Lake to create, if it were a new one?
You can't create new lots in Pillsbury Lake.
Can't create any new lots, okay.
No, you can't do-
So, anything closer to that would be good, um, obviously, we could put them all together, and isn't the total close to five?
If you merge them all together, it would be about five acres.
About five acres, if you merge them all together. Uh, the average lot size is a little above a quarter of an acre.
I would suggest, um-
What was that?
Given the past com- Given the past conversation with the water system and possibly, you know, dismantling that. A lot of lots on Pillsbury Lake are not large enough to have a well intercepting in a house with a forty foot perimeter around each one. So when you're thinking about these lots being subterranean, you have to keep that in the back of your mind. There's a lot of wetlands back there, correct?
According to the map, one of the lots is mostly wetland and the rest are not really. Who knows how accurate that is, cause it's just tax map.
Because when I build a house.
They go so small.
For a customer. The well has to be seventy-five feet.
And, and I would certainly suggest that anything that we would do would require the normal minimum requirements. Not the emergency requirements.
The folks in Pillsbury Lake. I don't know how they did it. All the people that are building wells, but the sediment system is.
Any lot in Pillsbury Lake can have a well, according to the state of New Hampshire.
No matter how little a well lot is?
Correct.
It just has to be lined to a certain depth. Case in.
Oh, really? That's kinda scary.
But as far as the, the planning of putting new houses in. Then yes, we should definitely be looking at the, the normal sizes and layouts to not make anything worse for anybody. Yes.
I, I hate to make it even a little more complex, but.
Please.
One of the challenges I've learned as a commissioner over a couple of years now is that. Webster in its zoning ordinances has no regulations about a residential district. Yet Pillsbury is zoned as a residential district. It makes enforcement impossible in our area. And so now, again, not to make it worse, but it's been our attitude that we wanna get past the water kerfuffle going on right now. And then start revisiting the need for a residential zoning ordinance. That would give us some backbone when people have forty roosters on their quarter acre lot.
And, and to your point, that's why Pillsbury Lake management exists slash existed.
Exists.
Sort of.
Exists.
And so that was based, for anyone else that's listening, that was basically the HOA for all of Pillsbury Lake. But I will not go down that rabbit hole at this morning, at this point in time, or, or that rooster hole depending on, on the case. Yes.
I apologize.
Point absolutely made.
The only reason that I brought it up is that if in fact we're gonna allow a division or a realignment or whatever. Of a specific residential zone, maybe it's like, wait a minute, pause. Let's put some ordinance around what this can become or cannot become. So that is enforceable and built to whatever expectation all of us, not just us, but you guys do have as a.
God bless.
Two more times I get to go home, say.
All right.
Do something, get you some authority.
Well.
So.
Exactly.
So it sounds like we should be looking at, how, how do you take a look at the warrant article? Whether the road exists at all or not at this point for someone to use to develop on. And then at that point, it, assuming it does for the, cause otherwise there's no point in continuing the rest of this. Assuming it does, and it sounds like the best kind of course of action would be discussion at probably a planning board meeting. Which may or may not include some of the select board and or other interested parties of what actually makes sense. Which I know is not the way that the planning board normally works. They're normally, yes, we do or don't bless what you're offering us because of regulation. But that's probably the best way to move forward, I think. Does, uh, do you see a better or more appropriate way for us to move forward?
No, cause they could be all landlord pieces out there.
That's right.
Way to get to.
Absolutely. So.
The role is very important.
And it's, and it's the select board that has to offer them for sale.
Correct. And so we're the ones that can put restrictions on how they're used when we put up that bid for sale. Because otherwise, oh, we're selling property, oh, it was originally divided this way, so we're just gonna do it.
Yeah.
And we don't want to see that happen.
They're way too small.
If there's no road and it can't be put in as a road. Then my request would be to have you bring us a merger. And so that we can put it up as a, and, and that would actually also, if there's no road. Make our other lots that are nearby on the other side of the road, abuttes. So it asks that you bring us a merger of all of those lots. For if there's no road, such that we can then put it out to bid on the normal process of Pillsbury Lake, which is not to be built. But to all of the abutters to be merged into their lots.
It looks like we could merge these seven.
Yes.
And these two. And then we have one that's off.
Well, I believe there's, based on the way that you're looking at it off the top right of the page. I believe there's two or three that we own up there as well.
There would be a field with a lot on Manchester Drive.
Oh, up here.
So they're, they're across the Amherst that doesn't exist. So that, that would be my request because then we can, A, consider getting them off of our books. They can go through the applicable process if required for asking planning, conservation, road agent, et cetera. Cause I think they were only asked about these seven, not the additional ones. But if we cert, if no one can do anything with it, we should offer it to the abutters and for an appropriate price. And get it back on the tax books for what it costs us.
Right, and then one other question of something to think about, I guess it's not a question, it's something to think about. But. I know at thirteen Manchester Drive, and then I think the town owns a strip before the next gentleman. So if the town owns a strip out through there and somebody doesn't own one in the middle. And the town owns enough, then they could sell that. And then you could get a road out through there and the town could adopt, adopt it and take it over later. Because you'd have to look that up on the map, but I'm pretty sure at thirteen Manchester Drive.
So, so looking at the map, we would have, have ability to have access to Manchester Drive. So I suppose you could do a.
So it's not, it's not.
But then you'd be looking at possible wetland for where the road goes.
It's not.
But we don't own that. So the normal road path that exists would not be one that we could put in. Because we don't have access over here or at this end.
Okay, no, just, it was just an, just an idea, a question.
That is something that could be looked at, but then we're basically getting into, the town is trying to do development. And I don't really wanna go there.
But could a private contractor build a road, buy that and buy, and all those properties and then develop them?
That's what we're gonna look into, that's what.
Awesome, that's okay.
It's not a given.
Gonna find out where the status of the old road is.
Okay, okay.
And then move on from there, correct?
So thank you all for brainstorming with us. I know this is.
We got really far.
Slowly, but we're trying. We're trying. All right. That moves us onto department heads. Which it looks like we've got three plus four of our usual staff.
Phil, just by the way, Steve would have already been out of here. I think he took the strike for you on purpose.
You're gonna get old soon. I was gonna do it all night.
All right, yeah, where's the car?
I've only been on for this morning.
I hope it's been quiet. Since you've been on, no? Of course not.
Lot of stuff I'm worried about.
So Dana said you'd like to see the calls that we do. So this is ten, I mean, yeah, this is.
Oh, this was what I was being asked about the last time.
Yeah, so this is a little bit of ten of this month, but this is nine and almost eight of last month, so.
The calls that you do.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
Medical trees, fires, et cetera.
They didn't have that in there, then I went through the book and got a lot of them, but they did it.
So what do you, so what if you go on the call, they just.
Well, this is what the call, the radio log.
Oh, okay.
Every call that you have to go out on by law or whatever, you have to have a, a radio log. So when we get back.
Somebody writes it down anyways.
We write it into the book.
So when you tell us that you're at X number of calls so far, this, all of them are in this?
Yeah, we're at, I got it on my phone.
Perfect.
But that, so, and then you can look through that and see how many times in one month we went to the same residence. And. Well, yeah, well, then we went there again Saturday. So, um, what is it? Yeah.
That doesn't have a reason.
Five thirty-two, well, it says medical.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at this one over on this side.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah. I got cut off when we printed it. I just went through the book and.
Gotcha.
Got over there on what I could find, so.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
So, um, yeah, I'll bring them with me from now on on them so you can see what's.
It's a, it's a good way to see the summaries.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and hopefully we can put together something that's a easy form to just have you like fill out two or three things and then we're good. And, and that way it's easier to, to see everything and let people see stuff. Cause I don't think people should probably see.
Well, that really isn't a whole lot of information, but. Um, with all the HIPAA stuff, the quieter you are, the better off you are and then you don't get in trouble. But I mean, I can share that with you because you're, you're my boss. I could develop something and then see what. So. You wanna go first?
Well, you go first, you're already up, Pete.
He's on overtime.
Yeah, you go at the end.
Just got that from Ben.
All right, so you got a new little, a little fired, little fired guy.
Fire girl.
Girl, girl, girl.
Fire girl, congratulations.
So, um.
Sorry.
Let's see. Oh, so we're at a hundred and ninety-three calls for service today. Fire prevention, the folks took some time off from work this afternoon. I'm not quite sure who did end up going, but was it Eric and Michelle and Carla? In who?
Carla and Eric.
And Eric, so they went down to the school and what was it? It was on fire, smoke detectors and stuff this year?
I don't know.
Yeah. So the folks, they took the time to go get that done and then thank you very much for them guys that did that and ladies.
And, and we heard about it. Several people are apparently very excited about the fire job that was shown off to be given away, so.
Yeah. Yeah, they asked.
Very good job.
They're gonna do, uh, they're gonna do a color drawing.
Something like that.
Something like that. And, um, yeah, so they asked the other night, hey, we need the credit card. So it does cost some money, but we have money in there for, um, community relations and stuff. So, um, it was great that the folks took the time to do that today. So, um, the pump maintenance on the tanker and engine two and engine three. Um, last month, Perkins pump came out and went through all them, serviced them. Engine two, I had a deck gun valve that was leaking by on that, so, um, they fixed that as well. Cause if that's not all working, you can't get good prime unless you know what you're doing. So that's done. Um, the pump testing, they came out a week ago Thursday?
Yep.
So I was there with them from eight in the morning and so two in the afternoon. Warner brought four trucks over and pumped tested with us. Um, that was the tanker, engine two and engine three. The MSA packs have been tested, the fill station has been tested. And all in good work in order. The, the fire car, Phil had that decal for us there the other day and it really turned out it looks good. Notified the gentleman, he's gonna come out and reprogram the radio, Rick can do that.
Yep.
The radio.
So is the car changed purposes now?
Well, it's going, it's not official yet. Um, I've taken everything out of all the equipment out that we need and I have to empty the, the back of it out of the box in the back.
If you could just let me know so I can notify.
Yeah, I'm still, still registered to the police and.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
So, um, that's on the way. Um, we helped, we, I hosted the Central New Hampshire Forest Fire Wardens meeting this last month. And we have a dinner along with that. And we, Susan cooked enough food and served thirty-five people. And Carrie and Denise came down and worked with her and helped her with that. If you can believe that. I mean, it's cool to get along with people.
Uh huh.
And we've had some.
Yay.
Yeah, you know? Yeah. No, it is awesome, it really does.
Cause we all just get old and end up in the same place anyways.
Just get along. So we talked about truck or treat. Friday night at one o'clock, we got, Saturday morning at one o'clock, we got Tone to go to Salisbury and we worked with him at a building fire. And so five o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Phil got me one heck of a deal on the new radio that we're gonna order for the tanker. He, he can explain that, so we have a PO for that. So the new tanker is well on its way. The pump is there, it should be on the truck and the tank and the body's built and it should be on the truck. They did call the other day on some switches and some striping and, um, some different little things. So I'm hoping that it's really getting there. So. So that's that. On the pump sites.
Hey, at least they didn't tell us that it washed away.
Well, it's in Mississippi, so maybe I haven't talked to them this week. On the pump sites. Uh, we went up to ban loans. Adam, Adam Doucette got out there. And, um. The way the runoff is from the mountain down into the brook, into the pond. And the, the dry hydrant goes out on an angle quite a ways. And over the years, all that sediment has covered that. So we're not, it, it's gonna be quite a process, cause I think the only way we're gonna do it is dig it up and start over. And, but we can go back to the old way, it's just as easy, two pieces of suction and you, you got just as much. Sometimes it works better than the stand pipe. So the water's still there, the only thing we have to do in the winter. If we're not using the stand pipe is on the training nights, we go up and cut a hole and then get a piece of plywood and a bale of hay and put over there. So when you get there in the fire, it's, the ice isn't two feet deep, it might only be four or five. So that's where we're at with that. And the one down on the river, I used plastic down there and it's not, I gotta get, I gotta get something designed up and have somebody make something out of metal. Take the one out that's there. Without breaking it. Because well, that's in the water and the water goes up and down, it, it just works it, cause it has to stick out so far into the water to. It didn't, it just, and it cracks it.
There's hardly any water in there either, so right now.
There's enough, I mean, that, that's another case, two links of suction and then you got all the water that you need. So, um, the ceiling and the striping at the fire station, the driveway, I wanna a big thanks to Phil. He lined that all up and it really dressed the place up and it looks nice. I know it was a lot of money, but, um.
It also preserves the driveway though. It also preserves the driveway though.
Yeah. And he dealt with all that, with the, with the people and the folks, I met them down there, I pulled the trucks out so they could stripe that on that Sunday morning and, um, seemed like a good, good bunch of guys. So thank you for helping me with that, um, town. Okay, that's what I have for firehouse stuff.
So you mentioned the two different dry hydrants, I think there was one or two others that you mentioned a while back. Have those been taken care of, like where are we now with number of non-working dry hydrants and or plans to replace them?
Well, the one up the Van Loon's has gotta be dug out and that thing is, it's gotta be twenty, thirty feet out.
Well, like is it just those two dry hydrants or are?
Uh, well, we, I had trouble with the one behind the school, but that might have been the pump, Ben went down and worked it. Well, I didn't have trouble, someone else did, and then I had, then Ben went down and it worked fine, so we have to work on that, but that's out into the river as well. But, um, I'm not sure about that one and that's the only three that.
Okay.
That, um, that I know of, and I, well, I know all the other ones work, cause we test them at least once or twice a year.
Perfect, thank you.
So, um, roadside mowing, that upset a few people, but it got done and it made a lot of people happy. A lot of people smiled, especially somebody that owned a truck or a van. Um, we cleaned up ninety percent of the brush, I still have a couple of, one road, I guess, that has a little bit that I need to clean up on, but um, we went around with a chip for a couple of days and then in front of people's houses where you couldn't chip to get rid of it, we threw it in the back of the one ton and hauled it off and, um, but.
It's very nice to be able to see over the bridge and not wonder if someone's coming in.
Well, you know, it, it, it looked like a war zone for two or three days, maybe a week, and then we got the brush cleaned up and then things started growing back and getting colors and the leaves and if, if you drove across the road now, you wouldn't even know pretty much that it was done, so there was a few roads we didn't get, because we ran out of time with renting the mowers, but we got the worst of it. Um, so GMI came to town on Friday and we shimmed and overlaid approximately three thousand feet on the White Plains Road and five hundred feet on the Roby Road was base and top, two and a half base, one and a half top. And Franklin Pierce in New Hampshire Drive, new pavement, base and top, was sixteen hundred feet and where we oval, overlaid the tire that was good coming in from Franklin Pierce off in Concord Drive, there was a section that I didn't rip up because it didn't need to be, so we just overlaid that. And then out back on the Hampshire Drive, we went a little bit further and fixed a couple of wing wangs out there, so.
And you're calling around to Manchester, that's nice.
Yeah, yeah, we, I put what sixty, seventy, was it a, was it a hundred?
Maybe a hundred feet, yeah.
Well, you turn onto Manchester Drive, so when the cars sit there and take off, they spin and don't make a mess and when you go to plow, it doesn't dig in and when you're grading, you don't have to be in the road, so, um, and up on the corner where it goes from Franklin Pierce to New Hampshire, we squared that off, it just not, we, so when you go up to the pump site, it, it just, it's awesome. And then I paved in front of our pump site, everybody thinks that we did it for the park, so they had to place the park, so when they're in the park. I didn't do it for that, I did it so when we're down there training or we're in a fire and you set a, something down, the cuplins aren't all full of dirt and grit and you're trying to get stuff done.
Yeah, cause the dry hydrants, right?
Yeah, there's a nice dry hydrant there and that works fine, so that's the reason I did that. Um, I figured if I didn't do it, it would never get done and it's gonna save an ankle in the middle of the night, you can plow it.
And the people very likely, people think you're nice, you did it for them.
Well, I'm gonna tell you what, there's an awful lot of nice people down there, that Mr. Parker out back, he brought everybody coffee down there, the whole crew, three big boxes and, um, there's a lot of good folks down there. There's a couple down there that don't think much of me, but the majority of them are great. So let's see where we're at. Um, the other day, I don't travel the roads every day, but when we were mowing and stuff, I have, well, I don't have, we have three new illegal driveways on Centennial Drive that I've noticed that need to be addressed. Um, we have an illegal driveway on Concord Drive that was never addressed, but now they took a street sign down that says dead end in pump site to make the illegal driveway wider that needs to be addressed. Um, we come off in Concord Drive to Franklin Pierce, they did a beautiful job cleaning that corner up, you can see good. They had some beautiful boulders, but the boulders now are four feet from the edge of the tire and they need to be fifteen feet. When I spoke to the man, he wasn't into it and said he didn't have money to move them and I told him that, well, I'll be addressing it tonight with a slick board. So we need to take a peek at that and see what you wanna do. Um, yeah. Um, the thirty inch, well, it's a thirty-two inch culvert pipe on Pleasant Street at the end of the cemetery fence going on to our big field. That's been in there twenty-something years, um, I knew it was getting bad, but I, my plans were to change that when I did that project, but when we had that two and a quarter inches of rain the other day, it washed, the inside of the pipe was rotten and it gouged it right out, now the road's starting to settle and I've got some rock up there to fill that in, so I went and got the pipe, I had one piece of thirty inch pipe and I went to Concord today and got another one, so I'm changing that tomorrow, so we don't have a disaster. So that road, Russell was gonna call your son, tell him that we're gonna have that apart tomorrow. I gotta call Addie so they can go down Allen Road. I told Russell that I would tell you tonight, so we're gonna address that tomorrow. Uh, New Hampshire Drive, out where Pete, your builder, used to live, they had a bus turn around in his driveway because they couldn't turn around, so the gentleman across the street, he's plowed that for the bus company for the last few years, I don't know how many years.
Probably fire anyway.
Yeah, so now he's, doesn't have his truck anymore, he's done plowing, so the bus company called me about plowing it, is it a big deal, probably not, but it is a private driveway and I told him that I would run that by you folks and where the money was gonna come out of the budget.
That the school bus uses it to turn around?
Yeah.
You ask the school district to pay.
They won't, I, I mean, the end of the Mutton Road, all the, all the bus stuff, I, yeah, I have to make sure they can get turned around a half, well, for years.
Oh.
Plow the schools.
Is there any option over there that's not a private drive that we could plow to let them turn?
Unless the kids out is the only other option.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the parents bring the kids out.
Yeah, the lady has it.
Where are we again?
Almost to the end, the next little last house on the right where Pete.
Backside of the lake.
Oh, yeah.
Backside of the lake.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, all the way out around back, she said the only option was she could tell the parents that they'd have to drive them out to the Manchester Drive, but I just, I don't know, it's, it's not a turnaround that we use to plow, you know, to turn around to trucks or whatever, it's, the bus has done that and to stop plowing somebody's pro, I just, I.
I, beyond the, we're plowing somebody's driveway, like, like it's great that we're gonna plow it to the school, I would be really worried that we are now doing maintenance on private property and if something goes wrong, then there's all kinds of.
Yeah, who's gonna, yeah, do I have to go up in the spring and spend two days landscaping or?
Right.
So that's why I wanted to.
That would be my big concern, so I don't know.
It's illegal to plow a private driveway.
Oh, that makes that easy.
Yeah, well, I, yeah.
So we can't.
So.
I mean, it's a.
But if it's a dedicated.
I don't know about that situation.
Turnaround, I just.
Still a private driveway.
I didn't want, I didn't want to do it without running it by you folks first, you know, I.
The driveway service is a garage, it's not to the main house, it's their second driveway, but it is private.
What did they do in the past?
Uh, the neighbor plowed it, the guy that went across the street.
For the buses?
For the buses.
He's not finding that neighborhood, right?
Roughly how far is that back road, is it about a mile from there to the corner?
Um, I don't know, is it close?
Yeah, I bet it is.
Yeah, because a tenth of a mile is.
The corner by there, like pump site is like the other place that I could see that a bus could turn around.
Well, that would really be, at the pump, yeah, at the pump site at Manchester Drive is where the, they used to turn around before the bus. The bus only started going out back, what was it, five?
You're probably five years ago, but it's kind of doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, well, for example, where we, where we lived, they had to be at the end of Coller Road or the end of Winnebago Road.
Yeah.
So what's that, what's that, that's over a mile?
Yeah, no, no, I'm just.
Well, well, I don't, and I don't know, I don't know how you, and I was just talking to, you know, my nephew's wife and she, they live in Warner, but I know my nephews were picked right up off Skudek and now the bus doesn't come all the way out of Skudek anymore. I mean, I don't, I don't know how that, who decides that, how that works, is there rules to where, how far a kid has to go?
I'm not sure.
I think we were talking about, by the time you.
So I just, I just wanted to have you guys aware, so if I, when I tell the lady at the bus company, I'm not gonna plow the thing, I know some of the folks are gonna be on the horn and I'm gonna be the bad guy, but then they're gonna call Dana at the town hall and start in and I just.
Well, he just told us it's illegal, so.
Okay, well, he's the boss.
That's the easy answer, he can tell them that too.
So, um, okay.
I just think I was going, if you wanted to try to do what you do everywhere fairly or whatever, that's, I don't even know, I don't even know what that would be.
At the end of the Mutton Road.
Yeah.
At the end of the Mutton Road, we have to plow that and we have for years to turn our trucks around to come out. The end of Little Hill, sometimes the bus turns around at Yeton, sometimes it turns around at the Camp Road going into Chuckies. But I plow, I plow the turnaround where we turn the trucks around, but I don't plow the, that's up to them.
That's, that's, that's you need to do, yeah.
So, um, at the White Plains Road, where we turn the plows around at Course's, we've always used that as a turnaround with trucks, so you gotta plow that anyway, so that's where the bus turns around, so, um. So, so maybe the thing to do is to make this all legal, Dana can send them, the bus lady down there, get ahold of her email and send her a letter and say that it's illegal to do a private and, or do you just want me to call her and tell her that?
I would do whatever the board tells me to do.
No, but wouldn't that be the, I mean.
Was it the bus company?
The bus, uh, the lady that runs the bus company in charge down there.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I would give her contact information to Dana, cause Dana can, if he's saying it's illegal, he can just tell her the same thing.
Is that a mini bus going up there or is it?
No, no, that's a seventy-two pass.
We only have two full-size buses.
But we don't have minis anymore?
There's only two.
Yeah, no, no, the mini follows the big bus around, two, two minis, follows the big bus around town all day long.
So where do they go?
They go up to Penicup Circle, one of whom does.
Oh, okay, the handicapped children, you mean?
And then.
One of them comes to Little Hill to my son's house.
And then, um, close, the end, close Pembroke Road, I think the little bus goes there.
Yeah, we have a detour.
But, um, yeah, no, there's a, there's a couple little different buses in town.
Okay.
So.
So if you give me her contact information?
Yeah, I'll do that, I'll do that. Well, I have her telephone number and stuff.
That's fine, yeah.
So. Okay, so the sign at Concord Drive, they'll call with the bus turnaround. Yeah, in the winter sand, we're gonna get that screened up here in the next couple of weeks. Um, I did talk to Dana and Wendy is helping me, we're gonna get a few signs for the winter ordinance for parking and snow removal, to put on a couple different sections in town. We have a lot of new people, we have a lot of new residents in town and I know the signs are gonna cost a few dollars, but every time that I have to call these guys and they come out, if, if the sign's up and they read it.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I know what you're laughing about, but, um, so I've been doing that for the last ten years, but I'm hopefully get that done. And Bruce Davis was out today, um, checking on me, um, he's the man from Allstate Asphalt that does our chip sealing and, um, helps me with the roads, so, um, he gets back from hunting, I can get ahold of him and, um, we're gonna go over some of the roads that need chip sealing to get prices for next year and get some stuff started for the budget and, um, CIP.
Can I mention a detour road again about?
Yes, where's that?
Huh? There's some holes in there, big.
Holes? You do got a Volkswagen, don't go and lost detour.
Follow the sign, it says detour.
Are you, what, what is your policy with filling in just potholes in a sense, you know what I mean? I've just had some people ask me, like, when do you, when do you do it and when do you, or how do you decide, I guess, of what ones you'll fill in and what ones you won't?
Well, it's a, uh, I'm gonna fill in a lot between now and.
Well, that's what I was wondering, I didn't know if you waited, yeah, yeah, cause you, I mean, I'm sure your plow doesn't like it either.
No, no, they don't.
I could ask, like, but.
The plows don't, so detour road, my plan is, I'm gonna go get a couple of loads of, just like I'm gonna do on the hill on Little Hill and the folks did come in a year ago. I did do the culverts up there and I did get a price to, to tar it, but, um, I can look that up on my phone and share that with you, but your eyebrows are gonna fall dead out behind whatever, so I do, I've got two more culverts to tar in, cause I do have the culverts all changed on Little Hill this summer, because they were all twenty years old and.
Right, right, you talked about that, yep, yep.
So they're all done, they're all tarred in, all but the two up on the end, and that's gonna happen Thursday or Friday of this week. And then the bad section of the hill, I'm gonna tar shim that in for the winter and, um, do a little bit of that down on Detour Road, it's not gonna be perfect, but it's gonna get it doctored up because when the plow digs into the front of the wing, I've got a truck up there that the front of the wing dug in and it's not, it hurts when it hits the side, don't it feel?
Yep.
So, yeah, no, that's my plan, I've got a, I hope it doesn't snow in so February because.
Good idea, I like that idea.
But, um, yeah, no, Little Hill really, that hill needs to be done, that's got, and Detour Road, yeah.
So, so is the plan still to kinda like, that let detour be as much of it as it can until after the bridge is in place, so that detour and.
Well, Detour Road has three livable houses in one campsite. Three, yeah, one at the bottom, the one in the middle, the one up on top. So there's three houses, Detour Road, you don't have to go across, cause you can go down Pleasant Street or you can go back up Pleasant Street on the tar, so it really hasn't been high on the.
Right.
On the list.
Maintenance.
On the maintenance.
I thought it was purposely being delayed until after the bridge was done.
Well.
Cause they're doing the correct section. Cause they're doing the correct section anyway.
And that road won't be used.
Right.
When the bridges were, when the.
Bridge is out.
When the bridge is out, because cranes and stuff will be sitting there, but I can look it up, but I think it's, so there's.
It makes kind of sense for, for the fact, it's gonna be, it's gonna be kinda shut down in a sense, so. Long as it's not gonna.
Well, just as long as a couple of holes that are in there now.
Five thousand, two hundred and eighty feet in a mile, so you break that down into tenths, so that's five hundred in twenty-eight feet in one tenth of a mile, and it's twenty-seven thousand dollars to pave base and top for five hundred feet, so you add that all up for the mile. It was what, two hundred and forty-seven, but I had it all figured out, but, so that's a half a mile. So anyways.
So.
So.
Yeah.
Um, and that's just the tar, that's not getting it ready.
Right.
That's not digging it up and getting the rocks out of it, I mean, that's another two hundred, but, so I gotta doctor it up.
Yeah, that's good, doctoring is good.
Um, it's not a priority, I mean, Lake Road. Lake Road really, I mean, the wing dug in last one and cost me quite a bit down there, but that needs to be.
Well, you got thumbs up, you got thumbs up, you can go ahead and do it.
So. But other than that, we're getting there, the roads, the, I, we are, it's, I haven't done my fall grading yet. I did go up Call Road and Winnebago it the other day, cause I had a day to do that, but now the leaves have fallen and.
Well, we need another nice winter like last year, so not too, not too bad.
Well, we have a couple of winters like we've had and that, I'm gonna go find a job with my trucks, like Canterbury, they, they're looking for trucks over there, a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, they pay five hours a week if the truck just sits there.
Really?
Yeah, and they buy, they buying the fuel, so, um, if stuff's just gonna sit around, that's the place to be.
Yeah, you're right, right.
They pay ten hours every two weeks if the truck doesn't move.
Wow, that's pretty good.
So.
And they're down two hundred drivers.
Wait, you're down what?
Two hundred drivers for the winter.
State can't find.
Oh, the state, oh, I thought you said Canterbury.
State can't find drivers, locals can't find drivers.
Two point seven million dollars they were looking for the other morning on Channel Nine News to give people.
Wow.
Yeah.
Sent it.
Which will just take it from one of us for slobs.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fun.
So I think on the highway side, I don't think I missed much.
Um, just in the, as we think about planning, and I know it's more for CIP, uh, but what is the expecta- like Pleasant is going to be the detour for the bridge, so what's the expectation for getting to the upper portion of the, the dirt road, uh, Pleasant portion?
There is some stuff you can do, but to straighten the, the lower half, the biggest reason we did that was for sight distance and it did turn out nice, the sun gets in there and dries it out, makes it more dusty down there for the neighbors, but up through there where the stone walls are so close, without rattling up feathers and doing a bunch of surveying, um, what my plan was when it came time to do the bridge, is put some gravel in there and some stone in the ditches and get that widened out that way and then remove that stuff at the end, but you take, coming from Walka Pond where that bank, I mean, that would be, I mean, I'll do it, but, I mean, that's time you cut that off and to gain six feet on that slope, you're gonna have to end up going twenty-five and then slope, that, that's, that's major, that's, that's.
Kind of straightens out there too.
Yeah, you can, and people are just gonna have to wait.
Yeah, I, I.
Without spending money, that's not needed to be spent, I mean, I could do a lot there.
But we're not.
But I think we could benefit by spending the money somewhere else.
Yeah, well, sure, you have places to spend it.
I'm not saying maybe a cou- maybe a couple more trees, but you take with the carbones, that, that's all ledge there, that whole right-hand side, you can't, I've been up there with a hammer. And you got that stone wall right here, and then that long drive, that's, that, that whole mound's all ledge.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a big slab of ledge up through there and without, yeah. That was my plan was during the summer was making that, so it didn't tip off and the, the ditches wouldn't be deep. We can add some, we can add some, um, travel lane that way, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
And by the time they get that site visit up and they got that good flow going, they'll just go so fast, they won't even know there, anybody's going hot.
That's because of the dust.
Well, calcium went up from sixty cents when we started to now, what was it, to a dollar seventy-five the last time we paid for it?
Something like that.
From sixty to a dollar seventy-five?
Well, over the last, but in the last two years, it's gone up from, it was ninety-nine cents for the longest time and then it jumped to a buck sixty.
Wow.
So I used to be able to get nine thousand gallons a year and now it's cut in half.
Yep.
And now I've got people that will come stand in front of the house with ball bat.
I haven't done that.
No, there's people that love it and there's people that hate you for it.
I know.
And it's, it does work good, um.
Well, your surrounding town sure the heck put it to it too, you know what I mean, I'm granted, your budget's different, I understand, I, I'm not to scream with it costing more, but, I mean, Henneker, Warner.
Oh, no, it works good.
Yeah, when they put it down, it.
Yeah.
You don't get dusted.
Um, the, the last, uh, road bit, um, is, of course, I know that, uh, things got mired in the driveway portion when we were trying to get the second driveway in and then the access road up to the new sand shed, uh, so I know that threw a wrench in all of the timing, uh, when do you think that it makes sense for you to try to get the access road up that side to where the sand shed location would be?
Well, if we don't get a lot of snow after Christmas, that's what's my plan to, um, get up there and, I mean, I don't, I watch the weather forecast, it doesn't, it looks like it, the, the weather guy says, make sure your sand and salt pile is full, don't worry about plowing much snow, um.
You mean, the people are wrong all the time?
So that means that. Expect to be snowed in.
So that, that's, that's my plan, is once I get my.
Which school's got a real fluffy tail, so.
Okay.
Projects done up, no, I, it's on the, it's, it's there, it needs to be done, I wanna do it, but I just, I'm saving that.
I, I just, I don't know where that, yeah, if at this point, yeah, cause yes, you certainly are busy.
Right, and I like to have a, a plan, so if we don't get any snow.
We have something to do.
I can at least keep my head above water a little.
And just as the, the reminder, because of course we're, we're trying to get up there and that's what the, the folks voted for us to go do, I know that, uh, you folks are working together to get the CIP some numbers for.
Oh, we looked at a bunch of buildings and different things, but we just can't get ahold of anybody to give us any numbers and people don't call you back and Malo and I, we've been working on that, scratching and really, um, we're gonna come up with quite a plan when we're done, believe that one, I'll tell you another one.
But yes, I, I know that, uh, that's something that you're both working on, even if not immediately.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, that the CIP will be looking for, so, um, thank you for that. I know it's not easy because, yes, people don't call back at all.
That's a fact.
Anything else for roads?
Nope.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you wanna sign Emmett's purchase order while he's here?
Oh, well, right, that was, um, the radio thing that, Eric had a story for.
Sure.
Pull the new radio, that's for the.
It's like a song.
A song is the story.
Just one page, right? Malo says it should be a song.
Well, no, isn't there a song, a new video, I don't know.
Those kind of dances, song and dance.
Okay, here you go, sir, bye-bye.
Uh, and is this, a fire doesn't have the fund, it's the police that have the fund, never mind, carry on.
Thought we were taking that out of the police.
Well, we might, see if I can get it back built.
You may initially, but I'll catch you.
I've tried to be careful, usually catches me.
What?
Kind of you have it come out of your mouth. Oh, God, that's, geez, I'm really welcome.
So, I have a purchase auto. For a new, new radio, and it, so this is the story, so I found out, Emmett says, hey, give me a price on a radio, and I go, okay, so I call the person and I get it back.
That isn't how it went.
No.
I said, I need to get a price on a new radio, and he says, you want me to help you with that, I can get a quote from the same people I just got one.
Okay.
See you willing to help.
So, well, I threw motorball direct, so anyway, so I get the quote and I call the girl, I'm like, that's a lot less than the one I just ordered, it's the same exact radio, what's the deal with that? So she looks into it and she says, yeah, we didn't give you the state contract price, so if you notice, it was, instead of seventy-one hundred dollars, it was, um.
Like forty-seven.
Yeah, forty-seven ninety-three, something like that, um, because she gave me an additional discount to make up for it and she goes, well, I can't give it, you know, directly to the police, I said, well, it's, in the end, it's all town money, as long as we're getting the money back. So I got a quote on a new base station for the police station, which is on the CIP, it's been on there for like five years. Um, we have the money in the police budget itself, so I thought it'd be a great time to go and just get that replaced and again, we saved the money on this too, it's another.
Wow, good.
Forty-seven hundred dollars.
Thank you, that was great.
How, how old is the base?
Twenty-two years old.
It's been there.
Yeah, and actually, I was thinking about it, about fifteen years ago, I had to put a new fan in there and I didn't have electrical tape, I had to put it together with duct, I mean, duct duct, I liked, uh, Scotch tape, it's still there.
What are you doing with your old radio, I need one at the firehouse. So are you planning to sign this or?
I don't know, we have to sign.
Yeah, you need to sign it, I'm bothered.
Oh.
And then I'll take it back and I'll give you, I'll get it to you soon.
Boy, oh boy, whatever, my name's too big.
I put small lines on purpose.
Yeah, thanks.
He, he, he doesn't want us to all fit.
Wait, he not signed?
Well, I figured it'd stand around the way back. Darren, mine looks big, cause I get the top line, there's nothing stopping me.
Yeah, right.
I have a second purchase auto for.
Hey, quarter's one.
I'll give it to him, Dana.
Right.
Cause Dana gave him one, you gave him one, now I'll give him this one.
Oh, no, it doesn't matter, it's, it's, uh, the chief's getting some.
It was on side.
You mean the police one, he's cut it out of his regular budget.
Oh, okay.
Out of his radio.
Because we had the money in there, this way we don't have to, if I took it out of the capital reserve and then we just gotta put more money in, maybe we won't have to put as much in this year and, um, that's for a storage box for the back of the new car. Like I said, if you don't wanna sign it, that's fine, the chief's getting the car, so I'll get him some milk crates.
I put a bucket, that's what I have in my car. Works great.
Don't forget the bucket.
Chris has more than a pool ball.
I know.
That would work too easy.
Couple of beer bottles.
But they're, they're different, they, they are up on legs now, so you can still get at the spare side, they're the, yeah, get at it. So a couple of other things, uh, we did walk to school day the other day, um, which was, was nice, um, and you have the chief report that he sent in. Any questions on that?
How, how hopeful slash likely are we on moving hires?
So, we have one person that's uncertified that is going through the process right now, um, which would have to go to the.
Like somebody new out of the academy or?
No, no.
What, what do you mean by uncertified?
Uncert- hasn't been to the academy.
Okay.
So it would, um, if he get hired, he would have to go in January and wouldn't get out until about the beginning of June and then probably by the time he's trained, it'd be next October, this, about this time, um.
So it would be a brand-new police officer.
Brand-new, yep.
Yeah.
And then, um, we have another guy that the chief talked to the other day and he come in today and talked to me, um, out of California, twenty-two years on the job, retired.
Kind of a commuter, isn't he?
What?
Kind of a bad commute.
That's, that's he hope to, hope to ask California?
I'm sorry, what? So anyways, he, um, so with him, the easy part is where he's got all the training and everything, it hasn't been that long since he retired, he, um, would just have to, um, go through two weeks of training down there for the motor vehicle and criminal law, you know, so he had learned that stuff and then he'd spend some time with us out on the road, cause, um, he said he was more into criminal investigations, less into motor vehicles, so, um, but seems like a nice guy, likable guy, I think that he'd do good and he, um, we should be able to get his full-time certification, but if he, he said he only wants three days a week, so.
Better than nothing.
But at least he did, you know, we, we wouldn't be limited if we said, hey, this week was short, I'm on vacation, can you work five? He can and he won't get penalized for it, so if we can get the full-time certification on him, that'd be, be worth it, um, and maybe he'll like it and wanna work for that.
Well, that'd be great.
Does he live in town?
No, he was staying at, uh, Cozy Pond.
Yeah.
Um, and his daughter, he's got one in Bosclun across from Ross Express and one in Bedford, and he's looking to buy a house in the area now, so.
That's good.
Nice.
Yep.
Are we dealing with any issues such as pensions?
No, it wouldn't, because it, it's only if he's a New Hampshire certified.
Okay.
Officer.
Okay.
So that.
I think you just said that.
Yeah, so that's why that's better, if he gets the full-time certification, we don't have that limit and.
Okay.
So, um.
Thank you.
And you like him.
Yeah, seems like a nice, I mean, I only talked to him for twenty minutes or so, but he's nice enough and, um, I got a call from, uh, engineering company, the last week of October, they're gonna be doing work on the bridge over here on Battle Street, uh, they're gonna have the truck there that gets them down underneath the bridge to.
Oh, wow.
Tell them to decide if they have to replace it, if they can repair it, or what they're gonna do, um, so for a week, it's gonna be one lane across there during the day.
One twenty-seven?
Yep, and, um, they.
Coming down the hill, yeah.
Yep, and they're gonna have, um, flaggers there and the streets, all the signs and everything and they've hired a, a detail officer for the week from us, so.
But we don't pay for it, I mean, we don't.
No, they pay for it, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, so, um, just got, uh, I mean, I'll bring it to, I'll do it to you tomorrow when you come to the station, um, we got the, uh, check from the Army Corps of Engineer for the detail we do for them all year long.
Oh, nice.
So that's, um, fifty-six hundred dollars.
Oh, good.
That would win the cruiser, the cruiser fund there, the revolving fund.
The revolving fund?
Yep, that's where that goes, um, and that's all that I have except for I would like a non-public.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we are not yet at non-public time.
Take your time.
But, uh, yes. Anything further for department heads? Yes?
Emmett, quick question, on the calls that we've had to the fire department, do you know what percentage roughly the ambulance calls out? Eighty percent, has it been staying on the average eighty percent?
Yeah, yeah, a lot, a lot, a lot of that, um, mental, mental illness. A lot, a lot of, times have changed.
Oh, yeah, I agree, but, yeah, we're staying average with everyone else.
It's far enough away, I'll show you, show you that there's a page of a list like this, uh, only three of those are not medical.
Okay, we're up a little higher.
To be doing eight, it's really good that this town has it, really.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh, so that then moves us into old business, starting with the budget.
Yes, and I believe Mr. Fangjoy is our first victim.
Give it a room?
Yeah.
What are you, just hanging out up here?
Well, I gotta talk about their budget.
That's right.
Kind of like that, uh, I dropped the sheet off, did you make a copy?
You know, I didn't, so here it is.
It, it's been fairly easy this year so far. It, it's been fairly easy this year so far. They already brought it up earlier about the chicken issue down in Pillsbury.
It's just a list of what he's done.
It, it, it's a list of some of the stuff that I've had.
Keeping you out of trouble.
Yeah.
I'm gonna give this back to you.
The, the chicken issues down there, the thing was.
No, 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 that's yours, that's yours.
Oh, oh, oh.
So, we've had that. I don't want those to go someplace.
I, I've had several inquiries about home, possibility of troubles with home, I, I can't say in public.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Okay, uh, I've had those. I had one. I think they got their first dog. And I was asked about the dog's health. So, I, you know, well, take him to a vet, gonna need shots, and take care of him. Health officer, I don't know. Uh, Paula and I and Matt Rodley, the other assistant health inspector, we've done some of the webinars. And so forth, they're offered about twice a month. Paula and I did go to an eight-hour conference this spring. We went to that one, we have another one tomorrow, and Paula saved the town two hundred and fifty dollars because there was a grant for health offices, and she applied, and she got tuition, or whatever it is for this conference paid. So, and right now, I'm working on a issue in town, once again, can't say anything, not that and so forth. I don't think this is gonna be resolved, but it deals with Health and Human Services and other services in town. So, our budget, part of the budget is for the water testing on the Blackwater. Part of the thing is, that test is specific that day, whether the water is good or not. When they take the water, if it rained within the twenty-four hour period before, it stirs up everything, so test comes back bad. You know, but if you wait forty-eight hours, but, but they have a schedule when they do the testing, and then they kind of deviate.
So, we have a question.
Yeah.
At the hazard mitigation meeting. Um, why, why are we testing the water there? No place else.
What, behind the school and so forth?
Yeah.
I've been down there, I think, five times this summer, and I've seen all types of kids in there, and parents swimming. So, that, that, that to me, I think we should do the testing, because it's really telling us what the water is coming in up above. I know people are swimming up above.
Yeah, but what about the lakes and ponds? I mean, you don't do those.
That's not, I understand.
It, it doesn't matter to me, I'm just wondering what.
Yeah. It, it's a movement, I guess, I don't know, I'd have to talk to, uh,
Michelle.
Michelle about that.
The, Roy, if the, and I realize that there's, you know, it's a moment in time.
Right.
And if you have a bad test, there's usually a reason.
Yep.
Or there could be a reason, such as a heavy rainstorm or something like that. Um, and maybe this is a question for Michelle and not you, but, um, how do we judge whether it's really good or bad?
Well, I'll tell you, I, I received a call, I think it was July, from someone on the Blackwater, who was down near Cashel Lane once again. And I went down to look, it was not the cyanobacteria that we had two years prior, where I had to do postings all along the river to don't swim in. This was just a regular algae bloom. It, it wasn't the bad one.
So, if they had two tests that were bad,
Yeah.
that would kind of indicate something, and there wasn't a reason, that would indicate we got a problem.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's just like the cyanobacteria. When we had that one a couple of years ago, I did testing, uh, behind the school, just above the dam, and down Tyler Road, I, I did it down there, and, uh, across from Mamie Roy's old house, I did it in there. And we had the high bacteria in there. And it was, it was during one of the real warm summers. Well, I asked the state about it, I said, how about when the water comes into Webster, shouldn't that be tested up there? Well, you're more worried about your main section. I said, no, because if the stuff's coming in farther up,
Yeah, right.
it's leading down. And actually, I did go up to the road up at the corner there, and you, you went down behind the dam, way behind the dam.
Oh, John Woods Road.
Huh?
Oh, John Woods Road, uh, Province Road.
Province, I, I think, no, not Province Road, I, it was just down from the Salisbury dump, actually.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Warner Road.
They're Warner Road?
Mill Road, maybe?
Corner over the water.
Okay, and it's in the floodplains?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I went to the dam, and I forgot Salisbury's dump was very close to the Blackwater. And I did a sample there, labeled it, and they were up too. Now, the bacteria at that time, it was, it was possibly people defecating in the pool
Yeah, right.
in the river, and it could be organophosphates, the fertilizers, and the breakdown of trash. And here, I'm wondering if it started there. But it was, that year was bad. I mean, the whole state had it in quite a few places. Uh, Takapon over there, they had it. They're way far away from the, from the dump. But, back to why we just test the river, we'd have to really ask Michelle on that one.
I don't think it's a bad idea, I'm not saying that, I'm just.
Yeah, right, I, I don't think it's a bad.
This is the only one that is town-owned park for swimming, so we would naturally be the ones on the hook to do that.
But I think.
Like Winnapocket, they've got their Winnapocket Lake thing, uh, the folks at Pillsbury Lake, they test their own lake, uh, on a normal basis as well.
Yeah, and Wakapon used to be tested by the town of Bosklin because it was they drank the water most of the time.
But doesn't, I mean, the Blackwaters, uh, it used to be, I remember it went into be Class A, it's a Class A river, I hope it stays that way.
I, I believe it still is.
But, I, 'cause I know I went to a meeting when they did a Class A in the sky from upriver, was all mad because, well, you know, he, 'cause they wanted to use that as like a, oh, New London, that's what it was, they wanted to put their, after the stuff's treated, they want to put it in the Blackwater. And I went to that meeting, I said, we don't want that, you know, and all that stuff, so, and I'm glad we stuck with it, get the classified A, I'm proud of that.
So, but in my budget, there's money there for the testing, I, I'd suggest that we continue doing that
Oh, yeah.
to make sure that, uh, citizens that do submit it.
So, you're suggesting to keep your budget the same?
I'm suggesting, keep my budget the same.
Well, thank you, thanks for doing that.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Um, actually, yes. Uh, the state has a website where they flag where it's safe and not safe for people to swim, often because of water test results.
Yep.
I've not seen any of our results on it. Um, is that a process that we need to do to say, hey, we want to be included, or is that?
I don't know, we, we have to ask Michelle about that.
Ask Michelle Tremblay.
That would be a Michelle.
So, that would be good, especially this one, that would be good to get added to that list.
But, but she's been good where we've got the results. And, truth, they're not here right now. Pillsbury Lake, I, in June, I think it was, I got a letter from Water Services in Concord. Pillsbury Lake, their well system, they had high cyanide problems.
Wow.
Or not cyanide, arsenic.
Hmm, ooh.
They had an excessive amount of arsenic. And I spoke, just spoke to the gentleman about that, again, uh, because they're on my list to call this month for another test to see how, what happened. What happened was.
Arsenic-specific filtering.
Yes, some sort. What happened was, there was a changeover in that filtering system, and just like the river, right after the, it was changed over, it didn't have enough time to purge. They took the test, so that's why it was up. He says, I can give you three, three current tests. After that one, everything's clear.
Nice.
So, I, I didn't want to ask him on that one here, so I.
That was good.
In the back of the room. But that was another, it, it's not listed here, but there was another issue I was dealing with.
What website were you referring to? Is it DES?
It was, it was under D, I believe it was under DES, because I had it, uh, when we had the cyanobacteria. And it listed everyone.
I think Stephanie showed it at the, had the mitigation meeting a couple of weeks ago, 'cause she showed on there where Webster had no, no reports.
You know, I think when she was showing that, I had just turned briefly.
It was out there with a leg tied.
I was probably trying, I was probably fuming about the computer.
It's called the Healthy Swimming Mapper, and it's part of NHDS.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else for me?
No, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for the ride.
You're welcome. Now, I gotta go take the dog for a walk.
Good neighbor, what a good neighbor.
All right, uh, who's our next victim?
I am the next victim.
And he's in charge of the health, that means it's all we have.
So, I'm, I've got the welfare budget, and I did put in your packets. And Dave, I've been using the online version. So, you should have it online.
I'm just looking sideways at what's in the pen for the moment, but awesome.
Oh, all right.
Uh, the, when we bring up the spreadsheet and do that, so he's updating it in there, and they're just printing these from there, which is awesome.
So, um, the welfare budget, which has three items in it, uh, the director's salary last year was, or this year's thirty-nine hundred. I, I kind of put that at three percent increase to four thousand. Training, I left a loan at two fifty, I haven't used any of it this year. Vendor payments, um, last year we had a budget of five thousand. We did increase it, um, no, it was five thousand, I did increase it by a thousand. So far this year, I've spent forty-three hundred, uh, which is better than two years ago.
I'm really gonna do this paper, right?
And one of that.
Where are you? Yeah, they're on the.
No, no, that was what we just finished.
Oh, well, he's, I'm sitting there going, I must just be having a bad night, maybe my glasses aren't working very well. Well, it's all right, another sheet, good.
It's okay, I'm doing it, I should break through this.
Anyhow.
He's working sideways. All right, I feel much better, thank you. Pretty good, Dave.
I will say about the welfare budget, it does, the forty-three hundred does not include, I, I had a client pay us back.
Oh, nice.
And so, that's on the revenues that, at one time, you'll see that.
That's really nice, I'm impressed. They do that an off, they do that a lot?
Well, I put a lien on their house.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. No, but that's, but that's good.
But we, we agreed.
But that's the one, well, fair of you.
I had spoken to you about that, that it looked really high, and it's because I knew that we were gonna be getting.
Well, that's, well, that's good.
And I hope I.
Well, that's fair for everybody, really, you know, you're helping, and then they pay back.
He wouldn't have been able to do it if we hadn't pushed him on the track.
Well, that's good.
And.
Keep pushing.
Every now and then I have a success story. Not often, but every now and then.
You do good.
Now, we also have a fund for welfare when it goes in excess. Do you believe that we are likely to see the use increase in this budget? Or is it a in case, and so it better just left in the fund?
Well, that's a very good question, and I don't know if I have a great answer, other than I think I like having the fund, it's a safety net. Um, I've not used it. Um, and I guess if, I feel if we put it in the operating budget and don't use it, it goes back into the, um, general fund, into the fund balance, and we still have our money that we've got in the trust fund. If the economy tanks and things go very wrong, I mean, we could see that not work out quite so well. But according to everything I'm hearing on the news, the economy's just great.
Roughly how large is the fund? I don't have that number in front of me.
Stand by. Eleven thousand, eleven thousand seven twenty-six.
Okay.
So, that's the balance in?
It's the balance in that trust fund.
In the emergency fund, should we exceed the vendor payments that are listed? Okay.
So, that was, that's the end of the welfare budget, and again, the six thousand, it's not really based on any technical thing. Okay with welfare?
Yep.
Long and short-term debt, um.
Jeez, I wish mine looked like that.
We don't. Fortunately, we, we haven't planned to use that. I did put a ba-, um, a budget of a dollar in both, both budgets in the event we have to. I'm not so sure whether it'd have to in the long term, 'cause that would, it would be a year from when we take our loan, so it's not as important. But the tan interest, um, I, I just put in case we have to use it. If we didn't use it last year, which we did not, we're never gonna use it, thank goodness.
Well, it's always good.
Last year, this time.
Be on the safe side.
Last year, this time, if you remember, we were having a really close cash flow thing with this school thing. And this year, I'm not saying I'm Diamond Jim, but it looks much, much better. The executive, um, I didn't really do much with the stipends. The stipend policy you, that you enacted in February, um, calls for two and a half percent increase or based on the social security increase, which as a matter of fact, is the same, two and a half percent. Um, so.
Just, did that just come out?
Uh, it's, it hasn't been out long, and, um, so I didn't change the, um, the stipends. And really, what, what went up in this was, well, I guess the salaries, I think those, I put the salaries at almost five percent in the hope you might buy that. But again, that's, you know, the cost, it is a two and a half percent social, uh, living increase. I don't, I kind of guessed on the NHMA dues, 'cause I don't have those. I put the technology services up quite a bit, and there was a reason I did that. Um, and I think it was because I'm thinking, if we were to change vendors, we may find that we need to have, have that. Software subscriptions, that's fairly flat.
I see listed at the bottom of that page, contract, a technology services is also including the annual software for pay provision.
Yes.
Should that be into the software subscriptions line instead? Yeah.
I'll move that for you right now, Dave.
I mean, that way, it's not an extra note for that.
Okay, well, that was, that was, I put that there because I thought, oh, maybe that might be good to remember.
I know they were also looking at, uh, doing the upgrades to our website, and that sort of thing. Do we have any idea what pricing is gonna be?
For the upgrades, free.
But, I mean, their ongoing costs, like, they probably aren't gonna just keep it that way, unfortunately.
Well, I haven't heard anything.
They haven't, yeah.
Contact, the last contact I heard is that they will be getting in touch with us within the, before the end of the year to start the process of transferring it to the new website. But I'm guessing they're probably doing larger communities first, and then going through it, and we're probably not top on our priority list.
Okay.
We started off, they were gonna charge us quite a bit more.
Correct, it was gonna be like, another, I think it was three thousand dollars a year to do the ADA compliance stuff, and now with the upgrade, it's gonna be all included in our normal price.
Some towns' websites are awful.
I think it's kind of the law, maybe that's. I think it's kind of the law, maybe that's.
I think you're correct, they have to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, financial administration. I guess that's up twenty, twenty-one hundred. I don't think I really changed much other than the salary line, maybe payroll services increased a little bit.
Association dues went to half, was that because we had a year where we had to pay it twice because of like?
I believe so, yes. And the tax collector postage, postage, as you know, is going up all the time. My favorite budget, the legal budget. And again, legal, we also have a fund for legal, which we have eighteen thousand dollars in right now. Last year we had a budget of fifteen thousand, so far this year we've spent twenty-two thousand. We have that money that the court is holding regarding the Fisher property, and we have spent a lot of money to have someone chase people that don't exist. But, you know, that we've gone through that. I've asked John, what is the court doing, I mean, are we gonna get the difference back? He feels we are, but of course, we don't know when that would be. I think that I left it at fifteen thousand, which even that, I'm hoping is a little too much. Not that there's gonna be a much, you know, between fifteen and ten, you're not gonna see much of the tax rate, but we've been dealing with this thing, well, we sold, we sold Fishers, what, two years ago? And we've spent, maybe a little longer, we've just spent a lot of money in legal, chasing our tail.
Yeah, legal's always expensive.
And there's not, not much.
How much, you know how much you spent?
I should get you a better figure, I don't know, I'll talk my.
And is it settled?
No, that's what, that's what I'm saying, we're still chasing people that don't exist.
Yeah, I kind of went through that, that's fun.
You know.
At least they didn't show up, hey, you sold my house.
Then they can take the money.
You know, that was the funniest thing, because he wasn't that obs, what he wanted, he wanted his money, and I don't blame him.
Yeah.
And so I said, well, let me call the attorney, I called him and he says, let me talk to him, he talked to me, he says, okay, thank you, and he left. So I guess he got his money. So that really was.
I just can't see that, I can't see a world where legal should ever go back down.
And really, fifteen grand's not that much.
And not, not because we're in high reticent mode now, but because stuff happens. And it's just a matter of course, and then we shouldn't have to go to the fund every time something happens.
Well, and, and I will say, I appreciate the select board allowing me to go to the attorney on a lot of these things, because I think we really saved money.
And you found a good one that doesn't, that seems to have an answer and not cost you.
Yeah, he's, he's very, he's given us.
We're just kinda talking that on this end of the table.
He also keeps me out of trouble.
Yeah.
Perhaps you should recommend him to the village district.
I don't wanna have the same attorney they have.
No, you're better off.
That's actually true, because it could, yeah.
Even though we used to, but.
Fair.
You know.
I was just thinking they could use a, a good one.
Well, it doesn't take every last cent you own. I mean, he is very, he, he gets back to you quick, I mean, you brought a wonderful attorney to the table, I think.
He's, he's really.
The relationship that he has with him.
That's what I mean, and, well, well, you know how you, you gotta, you get that one where you just call and they say, this is my legal opinion, here it is, and it's not like this.
And I don't mind, I love when I call him and I'll tell him something, he'll go, Dana, really?
But his years of experience, he really could be worth a lot more money.
Well, he's a, he's done municipalities, hopefully he's not watching.
But I doubt it. But do you think he just might wanna see how you're making out tonight, you know?
That's what I guess.
Okay.
So that's the, and tomorrow, uh, next time, we've got a few small ones, Russell will be here, conservation, cemeteries, parks. Mary will be up for the election, and town clerk. And so we're looking forward to that.
Great.
Emmett, you're, you're scheduled for November fourth, and you'll be back from hunting, right?
Yeah.
You'd be, right?
All right, is that complete the portions of the budget?
That's, that's all we have scheduled for tonight on the budget.
And of course, as a reminder to anyone that's going, oh, he said that it's up like twenty percent or something, these are suggestions and requests, this is not what actually the budget is at this point. So we will discuss those once all of the requests have come in, and then go from there.
And when you have every budget, you'll be able to sharpen your pencil a little more.
Yeah, and, and we'll also have, when we start talking about, for example, individual positions, for example, the placeholders are in, but we will have reviews and stuff like that before that happens, which is our policy, we have to have the reviews first before increases happen. So all of that will happen, so don't, don't expect too much immediately. We should have budget stuff by January, that's why we started now. Okay.
More good news, Dana?
It's all good news.
I guess, next up is the, I was scrolling to get there. Town Hall Maintenance Furnace Replacement Update, and I will just let you talk.
Well, I had hoped to have three quotes tonight for the electrical work that we need for the new heating system. I did receive two quotes, I talked to the electrician that we have used here at the town hall today, and, and asked him if he could please give us a quote. And I tried to explain the best I could what we needed, but I think he understood kind of what we, so I'm hoping we can wait till the next meeting, we do have heat, it's gas right at the moment, but naturally, we wanna use the heat pumps, since we bought them, well, we haven't, and I know that they're gonna be asking me for the remainder of the money soon. But I'd like to have one more quote, I gave you the two quotes that you saw, I won't mention numbers, but you can see they, they're not, they're quite far apart.
He doesn't need the capital anymore?
No, he's done, he's settled on his own.
The question I would have is, where, I, I know we had talked a couple different ways that we were funding the furnaces. How and or what are options, and where would the money be coming from to do this?
Well, we had talked about a few things, and we had talked about, we have, we have to use the ARPA funds up pretty soon, and so I was going to hit the ARPA fund first.
Right.
And then perhaps.
And we had appropriated extra into the fund.
You had, you had appropriated extra into the trust fund, which we have in, we have in the town hall trust fund.
And then, do we have anything left in impact fees that we would be able to use?
Town Hall Trust Fund, we have eighty thousand dollars, because we put an extra fifty-five in there, impact fees. We have about eight thousand dollars in there. So, and we could hit the impact fees, what if I got the, all right, but let me just check one of my other accounts here. Holding out a little. Well, since we're not, since I didn't, we didn't use the, I've got the record retention project and the doors here upstairs, and so I would have, and then we have some unassigned money, so we would have probably about ten thousand there.
Okay. And we were, we were hoping to have the extra there to be able to use for something like this, which is, okay.
So I don't think we're in terrible shape, we need another thirty thousand dollars, well, and plus maybe another fifty thousand.
Did you keep, you took the, the nine thousand we were gonna use on the parking lot?
I took it out.
Back, the ARPA money back, because we paid out impact, so.
Yeah, I did.
Which is why there's about ten left, instead of almost nothing.
Oh, okay.
We had like eighty-nine ninety-five in, in the ARPA money that had been reserved for you. And so we took out, we, we hit the impact fees, and then I also think, did we hit one of your trust funds?
I didn't think you did, but.
I don't think so, no, I mean, they're.
It's all good.
The.
I got too many numbers.
So that's good. Knowing that we're expecting another quote that, that we don't have, but that we do have funding locations for it, do we need to wait to see those as a board and make a decision? Or can we just say, take the lowest qualified bid, or lowest qualified quote? Because they're, you're doing the number of quotes, even if it's over ten K and not all of them are.
Well, you can do it however you feel comfortable.
I don't wanna really make an extra month delay when we're.
No, I don't disagree with you, and, but, but I guess I would need to ask some questions on these two that are in here right now. Because it doesn't, I mean, one doesn't even say anything, though I like the number better. And I'm not sure how much I.
Well, you can read that small print, can't you?
Well, this one, and one, and one with the number is bigger, it lists a lot more about what he's doing, right?
If you had specific questions, I could ask him, and I, I have to, because I'm not qualified to answer.
So, the one, the one that we probably like the number better on, who, who did, that, they speak to the heating people?
No, I, I found him on my own, he is the son of a resident of town.
Oh, okay.
He might be interested in doing, he has his business in Belmont.
Yes, okay, okay, now, yeah.
So there's a new man that moved in on the Mutton Road, his kids bought the house on Allen Road. He bought Mutton Road in Salisbury, he's a licensed electrician. And Mike Warren's nephew, Andy, has gone out on his own. He is an awesome young man and an awesome electrician, have, did you?
I did speak with Mike.
Mike is his uncle.
Okay, and he, and he couldn't?
No, Mike does a lot of work for us, but.
I knew he worked for Phil.
His nephew, Andy, he worked for.
I don't know anything about Andy.
He, he worked for Huckleberry for a long time, putting furnaces in and doing the electrical stuff, so he's familiar with what you need to be done.
His number's six oh three.
But let's not do that since we're.
Oh, he's in business.
So, not to throw a wrench into the Maki thing, but I mean, if you, if you have a few extra in there.
That's awesome.
In.
Well, if I can get him to give me a number.
In the, in the man that lives on the Mutton Road, I'm not sure what his name is, but I can get you his card.
I'm just, I'm saying, as far as Marlo, I'd like to answer your questions, but I know that I'm not really gonna know.
I, I read the job description to be roughly equivalent to what the other is, he's just raising it differently.
Right here.
Yeah, here. This is what he's saying he's doing.
Oh, okay.
I'm explaining very well, I'm saying, I just wanted to work.
The quote, gotcha, but it's not really a gotcha, because that's what should be supplied by the, that's part of the normal heating install package anyway, so.
Gotcha. Gotcha. More or less, he's just doing the hooking.
Right.
He's not bringing much.
He's setting it all up, doing the, the utility work.
But the heating people have the thing.
And, and giving them the panel that they can actually use. And that's, that's all.
So this does include the panel?
They're still obligated to plug a set.
But the fourth. Both quotes are saying do the same thing.
Okay, good, fine, that's all I need to do, thank you.
But why is it so much different?
I will refrain from trying to answer that.
Okay, good, good, but as long as you see that it's the same, and that's good, so that's, that, well, I mean, granted.
At least the description is the same of what they're saying.
And so I guess go back to your, what you were gonna say, yes, I agree with what you're, you're saying, is that if, for him to be able to, you know, go with the most qualified, lowest, lowest price.
The least expensive qualified offer.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
That would be good, so at some, at some point down the road, I'm gonna need it.
So you're expecting very soon the other quote, you've now got two other people that it sounds like, two contacts. Not wanting to wait till our next meeting, though I suppose we could actually, we could actually do that as a, I don't wanna do that, because we, we do meet next week, but that's.
Next Tuesday, yeah.
But pretty mu, pretty much.
Sorry, at Hockington, I don't wanna deal with that.
No, not at Hock.
So, I like, should, I feel like we should conclude a date if we're doing that, like, by this time, take the most qualified one. Do you expect?
In time, it's gonna be, like.
Do you expect that by, say, the end of the week makes sense?
I think so, yeah.
Does he have to, and have a special meeting, you mean?
No, 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 to, like.
So you're saying the end of this week, Friday, perhaps?
And then on Friday, he'll make a choice, so that we can start moving forward.
Oh, he'll make the choice, so we won't make the choice then?
Well, we're telling him what choice to make.
Oh, okay, well, I think at the end of the day, too, you've got to know availability.
Right, and, and that's the whole deal.
Yeah.
That would make me know.
That would be qualified.
I've also been told that we may have to have Unitil involved.
Yeah.
Oh, good, Dave can get ahold of them.
Yeah, good luck.
You'd be better off, you'd be better off to have me get ahold of Unitil, they like me.
Well, they're gonna like what we want them to do.
I have learned to use their voice thing, you know, all the buttons and.
You don't have the numbers write to headquarters?
No.
So, so, yeah, that'll be fun, but. They're saying they'll coordinate with the utility, they're not saying they'll do all of the work with the utility, so it's gonna be the same either way. Yeah, timing is gonna be the thing.
But who needs heat?
Well, we have heat, we just don't have efficient heat.
Well, then turn it down.
Dress in layers. Dress in layers.
That's right.
Let's see.
Or have hot flashes, whatever.
I hope not. Could all the electric heater on on the address? Take care of everything?
Okay, it'll have to have some wiggle room in the, in the motion, but I think we can do that. I would move to allow Dana to choose the lowest cost, effective, and available quote for the electrical service required for the new heating system.
A second.
Oh, by Friday, on Friday. Do we need roll call or anything?
No.
I don't think so. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Pose.
So it's gonna be the eleven?
Strike that.
Okay. I guess we're done with heating then.
Okay.
Which moves us to utility assessments, is there anything else, else to say other than we got them?
There really isn't, that I just wanted to fill you in on what they were.
Perfect, any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
So am I, Lee.
Correspondents.
I would like to ask if you would sign a letter to Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Reynolds spent quite some time down cutting the brush and things out of the solar fields.
Ah.
And I think he did a very good job. It looks, it looks really good and he was very nice to do it and I very much appreciated his help.
Well, that's nice.
And regarding this, we should, uh, when, when you have discussions with the various maintenance folks, whether it's ours or the schools, uh, try to figure out who and what would actually make sense to maintain it going forward instead of random people volunteering, the, uh, energy committee volunteering to do it, et cetera. Cause it's not something where we should be, oh yeah, it's just there and we hope somebody will volunteer to take care of it.
Um, yeah, if we had like a lawnmower, I mean, a hand lawnmower.
Well, have somebody take care of it.
You know, a small one.
Regular electric, I mean.
Riding one.
Yeah, right.
I think that thing is to keep after it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Keep after anything, it's easier.
Yeah.
So, if we could have a, if, if, if somebody would be willing to sign up to do that, then we would need.
Maybe, maybe, Russ, how about you and mom and grass?
I'll do it right after I'm done shoveling.
Well, Susan takes care of the church in the Veterans Memorial and the bridges down here. She waters them every day out of the goodness of her heart. You know, lugs water to the Veterans Memorial every day in the summer and.
She's all that's wonderful.
Mowed the church, I don't know. I've been here, I've been here since ninety-nine and I don't think it's missed a, a beat. And then since then, when they put the bridges.
My gosh, you've been here for twenty-five years?
Huh?
You've been here since ninety-nine, twenty-five years?
Yeah.
Wow. Good. You're an addition, good addition.
Well, my grandfather, my mo- my father was from Webster and my grandmother and grandfather were always from Webster.
Oh, were they?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they're buried up in cemetery.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I would drive through here and say, wonder where the town is.
Okay.
In correspondence, we had a resident that came in that got a penalty. And he's asking if you would consider reversing it. He says that he did not receive the inventory form in the mail. He does, he has filed every year.
He has. This is the first year that he hasn't filed.
And I did believe him.
Yeah, it seems weird, well, if he's always filing and all of a sudden.
I know we haven't, you haven't done it in the past, but I told him I would talk to you about it.
If he's filed it every year, wouldn't he ask for it?
Well, that's a, that's a valid question, but apparently that didn't happen. And I suppose you might not remember if you don't get it in the mail.
Is there?
IRS doesn't care when that happens.
You know, no, they don't. I found that out myself.
Is, is there anything that gets disclosed on it this time? Or is it a, there's nothing, here, nothing changed?
Uh, but no, there's no changes.
I.
I like to believe people, but at the same time, we've purposely been saying that we're, we're treating everybody the same. We're not doing the exceptions like this unless they're showing that they mailed it, you know, and it was the mail that made it late or something like that.
Cause we've.
Please, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my memory and I wanna make sure that we're doing this.
No, I think you're absolutely right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and I think, like you say, I mean, people that probably really, I think, I think most people just, well, the good news about those is it's, the only reason, the only reason you have to send in money, in a sense, you know, great, and I suppose if you said you added a six bedroom addition, then you're gonna, but they're gonna catch up to that anyways.
Well, this is a very old fashioned way.
Well, right, but what I'm saying to you is you have no reason not to mail it in, you know, sometimes people mail, oh, I won't mail that in cause I don't want them to know about that or something.
Right, and I don't think he's, uh, yeah.
No, but that, so what I like about the whole thing is I don't like the fifty dollar thing to be able, but I suppose you have to keep people's feet to the fire.
And we have to do the same each time.
Well, right, and that's the hard part, cause I'd love to say, sure.
But I don't, they've always done it, just forgot. I mean, things happen to people's families.
I, I will point out that, um, I think it was earlier this year, it might've been last year. We did have a similar case with somebody that came in claiming, yeah, I've done this every single time all of these years. I've never been late. And, uh, we did not say that that was gonna be okay. I don't remember the full circumstances, I just remember that that.
Oh, we do.
That was not that long ago. Um, and so it would be.
You have to give everybody get out of jail card once.
And it's, you kinda have to do it the same each for everybody, so.
We're sorry.
Okay, thank you. I told him I'd ask, I did, and you did. You saw that I had the letter from the county that you owe them six hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Thanks.
So that happens in December. I had shown Emmett this next letter, which came from the DOT regarding posting signs for emergency vehicles. And Emmett, I talked with them a little bit. I'm not quite sure what this means, but the double this is what the limit is.
Oh, double it?
Double it.
Oh, well, then that makes sense then.
Yeah, because I said, how can we get an emergency vehicle?
I don't know.
It's because they're doing by axles.
It's, it's, the sign is an example of the type of sign, not the data on the sign.
But it's just for emergency, but the sign's only for emergency vehicles, it's not for any other vehicles, correct?
This, this one's just for emergency vehicles and it's to comply with, uh, the Fixing America Service Transportation or FAST Act. And as you know, that's a very hot topic and every.
I don't know.
NHDOT has a deadline with FEMA to fabricate and install these no later than September of next year.
We had one bridge that they're talking about, it's Deer Meadow Road, uh, over Deer Brook.
Yeah, the little culvert brook.
And I thought if I can save Emmett from having to put it up, why not have them put it up?
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah, they put it up.
Yeah, this time, that, that's what they.
Oh, that's okay, I guess.
Hey. The, the roads can't be polluted with signs any more than they are now.
Oh, yes, they can.
So that was the correspondence.
People can do all kinds of crazy stuff.
And do we have any further things to sign and such?
You have minutes and then I have a lot of things for you to sign.
A lot of things.
Well, I have, I need motions for the trustees of trust funds.
Oh, it, it's the quarter.
It's the quarterly thing.
That's always fun. So, uh, why don't we take care of that?
Okay. And the bills are with it in the event you have an interest in those.
No, this is you gotta do all that. Can you show them?
This is where we move the, the fund, stuff from the funds back into the budget, cause we paid it out of the budget.
Oh, you, oh, you want these so she can check them out?
Yeah, she always likes to go through that. And she keeps me honest with numbers sometimes.
Yeah, I know.
Though I don't tend to list every single thing at this point, so I'm just gonna briefly go through this to make sure I've got what I'm gonna do while she looks through those.
I like this job for you, Vips. I can nap.
Is it bridge improvement? I thought it was covert and bridge, or bridge and culverts?
Um, I think it's listed as bridge improvement.
Bridge and culverts.
And I thought it was bridge and culvert, cause we definitely take culvert stuff out of it.
Well, I take what the trustees give me. And, and I'm looking here for that.
What's this one?
Bridge culvert improvement is, did I have, what did I have?
You didn't have the culvert.
Okay, put the culvert in. Could help us a little. I will, uh, I'll give myself.
I was just like, why would, why would the New Hampshire treasurer get something from that? Okay, that makes sense. It was the DES application thing. Just because I don't have it in front of me right at this second. How are we, uh, with and or deciding the numbers for what comes out of the Road Preservation Expendable Trust versus the budget portions? And or where is the budget?
I, general maintenance is my general maintenance.
Um, you mean, I'm, I'm, I don't know, is the question?
Cause we had kinda said that the Road Preservation Trust was now the, beyond the budget portion. And so where is the budget for that? I know there's more coming with, for like salt and stuff, but sand.
Well, Emmett and I work out which comes from which.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, Dana and I sit down, I sign off on everything and we go over it.
Okay.
Emmett has it in his head, I can't fool him either. Him and Phil, that's right.
And that is definitely supposed to be the police equipment capital reserve fund, not their revolving fund?
Uh, no, that is the police equipment.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm ready when you are.
Okay, good.
So I've moved to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents, payable to the town of Webster to reimburse the town for expenses. We withdraw from the following capital reserve and expendable trust funds. Fifteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-five cents from the Bridge and Culvert Improvement Capital Reserve Fund. Three thousand, three hundred dollars from the Cemetery Improvement Capital Reserve Fund. One hundred, seven thousand, eight hundred, fourteen dollars and sixty cents from the Highway and Roads Capital Reserve Fund. Ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred, forty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents from the Road Preservation Expendable Trust Fund. Seven thousand, one hundred and one dollars and sixty-eight cents from the Police Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. Thirty thousand from the Town Hall Improvement Capital Reserve Fund. And six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents from the Technology Fund, uh, Expendable Trust Fund. Again, that total is two hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred, fifty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I have the signature page for the MS one. The MS one is the total property valuations that I'm sending into the DRA. And I have signature page for the MS five thirty-five, as the auditors have prepared for the DRA.
Hopefully I didn't mess her up.
It only counts if you shuffle them.
Right.
Trying to get the ace on the bottom. This one is good.
This one's good.
Oh, just more of the same.
It wasn't me.
I have three hundred dollars for postage to Pitney Bowls.
You're not mailing all your invitations?
Well, that's to make sure we have enough, you know, so we can send our Christmas cards.
Well, those ones were a different kind of postcard.
That, that must be to put stamps on that five hundred envelope I just bought that says five hundred. Those are the ones, yeah. Then I have a, a Unitil for three hundred, four dollars and eighty-two cents, which is.
Disgusting.
I was supposed to be paying them.
For the sign.
Oh, we pay them.
Oh, that's just for the sign?
I asked them if they could send it to me electronically like they do the other bills and they're not sure, they've gotta figure it out.
Oh, gee.
No, that's, that's, that's about perfect. Sounds about right.
That's just something you just want, I mean, I'm not very computer oriented, but these guys, come on.
That is not what we were told it was gonna be.
Exactly.
How long is this?
It's not.
That sign keeps on growing.
No, so this is July, August, and September.
Those are three months.
Cause they never actually bothered to figure out how to send us a bill.
So what they, it.
It went to.
So it went to the police station.
So about a hundred.
So the.
That wasn't what they said.
No, it's not.
It was thirty-five.
Thirty, thirty-five dollars a month.
Right, right.
Yep.
That's cause we, it's our fault that we put too many letters on it.
Maybe we take some of the balls out.
Isn't that the one we're talking about? The signs with everything that's going on in this town?
Oh, have to get a generator and run it? Well, next April, I can change the apportionment to take some of the.
But it is nice to have that there. I think it's really nice.
This is the money I spent for, um, the visa bills.
And did I have any Uber rides this month?
Nope.
No.
Uber rides.
You had a very small bill this month.
As usual, I'm the bad egg. You know, what was it, a year ago, we got charged some Uber rides, where was I?
You, you having a good time. I forget now where you were.
Really?
Yeah, know somebody, yeah, somebody, um, used enough, uses, we had to cancel it and start all over and Dana and I worked with the credit card people and got that all straightened out.
What a, that probably was a mad, that was probably a madhouse thing to try to do streets, something like that.
It was actually, Dana took care of it. It was pretty good.
They're good. What's, what's the word to be, automatic things that come out of that one credit card?
They're gonna have a little less. No, just screw you, cause you know, towns.
I get where I was. I never left town that weekend though.
You just wonder about.
But they were only like seventeen dollars, I swear. They were just in what we call it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But most of them, as long as you catch it within the, like, within your statement period, as you catch it, it's usually there. Okay, we can see where that is, we'll start the investigation and take it off.
It really, it really works good that, you know, because when we were sending checks and it was taken forever. That's all I have to sign.
Oh, look, looking at the, uh, minutes reminds me of something for the two of you and Dana. We were waiting to have or get together the people for the, I think you called it the Safety Committee? But the, the Road, uh, Committee for looking at the signs and so on. Where are we with that and is there something that we can do to help to get that going or?
I think that, um, I've talked to Steve about it and I think we're almost there to do that. And you were talking about, there's a speed limit, I think, on, on Lake Road.
Yeah, that was the primary kickoff to it all, yeah.
Last week, Russell had us up that Long Street. I guess we told you that about the, uh, that project.
All of them, yeah.
I thought, I thought we voted on that one.
Long Street.
A long, strong street. Why don't we have a long, lawn, L-A-W-S?
Take care of that. There was the yield one that we didn't want, that they said, don't put a stop sign at the yield. That's what we previously dealt with. But yes, the same location.
Yeah. No, the one behind the rock.
Yeah.
I thought we voted on that one.
I thought you did too.
I thought you did too, but okay.
Took the minutes.
All right, is there anything beyond the minutes, and then fill one of the non-public?
Um, I have nothing more on the minutes, you ready to do those?
Okay, someone would like to make a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept minutes, uh, September sixteen, two thousand two, twenty-four, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay.
I practiced that all morning.
All right, and what is this, uh, non-public under, or what?
Personnel, I guess.
Personnel, okay. So, I would move that at ten oh one, we enter into non-public under personnel.
That would be ninety-one, eighty-three, section two A, three, two A, and you do need a roll call vote on it.
Yes, and a roll call, so Dave Hemingway, yes?
Marlo Harris, yes.
Dominique Blake, yes.
Okay, and as per usual, we will not, uh, return to public stream, uh, once we are done the non-public session, we will immediately close the meeting.